All right. We should be ready to begin. Can you hear us okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so I will call to order the Monday, June 8, 2020, evening of the Oregon City Planning Commission, and thank you all for doing it via Zoom. And then those of you who are there in the chambers will try to make this thing work. So first item on our agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments on items that are not on our agenda this evening?
Well, we do have people in the audience, but I am not seeing anyone raise their hand for general public comment section.
Okay, then we'll move on to item number three, public hearings. First item 3A is public hearing GLUA-20-00012, Oregon City Christian Church Conditional Use Permit. And I do have a script I have to read there with me here. Two public hearings on land use applications are scheduled tonight. Our role is to conduct the public hearing and to make decisions about the matter before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws and cannot vary from or change those laws or codes. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the commissioners whether they have any potential conflicts, such as family, financial, or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. I will also ask whether any of the commissioners have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. Any member of the audience may question any commissioner about their disclosures. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown in the chart on the wall in the chambers. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written materials while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If the person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. They are not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised on the record for the consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the city commission or the state Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. So now I open the public record for item GLUA-20-0012, and we'll go through our list and ask each of the commissioners about ex parte contacts or site visits or conflicts of interest, beginning with Commissioner Gage.
I have no ex parte contact. I have been by the site and I haven't talked to anybody about no conflicts of interest.
Okay, Commissioner Guile.
Zero on both counts, sorry. Zero on both of them. I have not been by and haven't talked to anybody.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson.
I visited the site, no contact, no ex parte contact or conflict of interest.
Okay, Commissioner Schlagenhoffer.
No ex parte contact. I drove by the site.
Okay, Dirk, I think you need to be a little closer to your microphone next time. Your volume needs to be louder or something. We're a little hard to hear. Commissioner Stacks.
I have no ex parte contact. I know the site. I drive by there every day, but I've had no contact.
And no conflict of interest?
No.
Okay. And Commissioner Stoll is not present this evening. I have not visited the site. I have no ex parte contacts, and I have no conflict of interest. Does anyone in the audience or listening wish to question any of the commissioners on the statements that they've just made?
The room is silent.
Okay, so we'll move on with the staff report, and that's Ms. Disalvia.
Thank you. This is the staff report for Planning File GLUA 2012, CU 2001, and SB 2022, which is a conditional use permit and site plan and design review application for the Oregon City Christian Church. The site is located at 1179 South End Road, just south of its intersection with Warner Parrot. It is approximately eight and a half acres in size, and it is zoned R10, which is a residential zone, and churches require a conditional use permit, which the existing church has one from 2007. The surrounding properties also have residential zoning and are developed with single-family residences. So the applicant has proposed a new recreational building approximately 14,800 square feet in size. It is proposed to be used primarily by the church, but also will be provided for use for local youth sports recreational leagues. And the proposal includes an expansion of the parking lot as well as some new associated landscaping within the parking lot. These are the elevations of the proposed building, and this is a rendering of the building that kind of gives you a better idea of the design. So the reason that this is before you is because of the conditional use permit piece of it. But tonight I'll primarily be talking about some of the modifications that are being requested because I think that'll kind of be the sticking point for the applicant as far as what we are requiring. So the modification that's being requested is for some of the building location standards in our code. We have several different standards that basically all require new buildings to be located up near the street. Specifically, the first bullet point there requires that on sites with 100 feet or more of frontage, at least 60% of the site frontage has to be occupied by buildings placed within five feet of the property line. On top of that, we have various other standards requiring buildings to be oriented towards the street, have their main entrance facing the street, and their most architecturally significant elevation to face the street. So originally, the applicant proposed that the building is located directly behind the existing church, which is kind of the opposite of what our code requires. The applicant requested a modification to the standard, but the modification criteria require that the modification has to result in a development that better meets the applicable design standards and that the modification meets the intent of the standard. Being that the proposal was kind of so directly in conflict with what the standard requires, which is buildings up to the street, we didn't see how it was possible to approve the modification. So one solution that we identified that could allow us to support the modification is if the recreational building was connected to the existing church because then it would be treated more like a building addition rather than a new standalone building. So based on that, the applicant revised the proposal to include a breezeway, which would connect the existing church and the new building. So I'll go through the modification criteria. This is obviously the proposal, which shows the breezeway, and it also includes a pedestrian plaza that is located between the two buildings. So...
What? Pedestrian closet?
Plaza.
A plaza.
So the first modification criterion is that the modification will result in a development that better meets the design standard. This location is the only location where the building could be connected to the church while providing an adequate buffer to adjacent residential properties, which what they're proposing is about 68 feet. This proposal better meets the design standards because it balances out providing that buffer to the residential properties while still providing a walkable development with easy and safe access between the church and the recreational building. And on top of that, the plaza between the two buildings adds some additional site interest and kind of an interactive gathering space on site, overall resulting in a development that better meets the design standards. The second modification criterion is that the modification meets the intent of the standard, and on balance, the proposal will be consistent with the purpose of the standard, which is being modified. The intent of standards that require buildings to be near the street is to create interaction between the public and private space and create walkable streets and walkable developments with a human-scale design that is attractive to pedestrians and encourages alternative modes of transportation. So even though the building is set further back, the addition of the plaza between the two buildings and the connecting breezeway results in a development that is pedestrian-friendly and is interactive while maintaining that connection between the two buildings. So the key piece that is kind of holding together this recommendation of approval is of the modification is the breezeway and that connection between the church and the recreational building. If the connection between the church and the new building is not required or is removed, then there's no reason that the building couldn't be located in the southwest corner of the site where that red rectangle is and where it would meet all of these standards about requiring buildings to be up to the street. So we have a condition to that effect to ensure that the connection between the two buildings remains and that future development will comply with those standards to have buildings be located close to the street. It's condition number 38, and I will read it aloud. It requires that future new buildings on site shall be constructed near the street in accordance with building location and site frontage requirements within the Oregon City Municipal Code. Future expansions of the church may be permitted, provided that the pedestrian plaza and courtyard is not demolished and the church and the recreational building remain connected. I'll quickly go over the conditional use permit criteria. The criteria are listed there. The requirement is that the use is listed as a conditional use in the underlying district, which is the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use. And the one on this list that we have a condition for is number four, which requires that the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in the underlying district. We did receive one comment from a resident of the adjacent neighborhood that identified some concerns about noise or big gatherings taking place in the parking lot. Since the expanded parking lot is moving closer south to those properties, the applicant's submittal didn't indicate that they're planning on having any events in the parking lot, but we did condition that they establish a good neighbor agreement with those with residents within 300 feet of the site to kind of establish a dialogue. And the good neighbor agreement is conditioned to have contact information for a contact of the church or the recreational building to ensure that any issues that come up are addressed. So the rest of the conditional use permit criteria we found are met, and there's findings in the staff report that kind of go into more detail on that. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that as well. So with that, we are recommending that the Planning Commission approve the application with the conditions in the staff report and with the breezeway that's proposed. And I can answer any questions.
I'm not sure if I should ask you or them. Go ahead.
We'll go through that same list in order of the commissioners so we don't end up talking over one another. So questions for staff, starting with Commissioner Gage.
I have no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Guile.
You only received one letter from one of the neighborhood. Were all the neighborhood sent a notification of a change to the area so that they all knew? Or was there any neighborhood association meetings talking about it?
We do send notice to residents within 300 feet of the site via mail, and then there are also signs posted on the property. The there is a requirement for a neighborhood association meeting for a conditional use permit. The South End Neighborhood Association currently is not active, so our code requires that rather than attending a neighborhood association meeting, the applicant attends a citizen involvement committee meeting. And the applicant was scheduled to do that, but that meeting got canceled due to the COVID.
Is it permissible to say that I'm uncomfortable if this has not been presented to the neighborhood either through the citizen involvement committee or the neighborhood association?
This is Laura Turway. Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that we did have a CIC meeting via Zoom last Monday, and this was presented at that meeting.
And what was the response of the CIC? I mean, were all the members on the CIC present, and what was their response? Because it doesn't really present it to the neighborhood, only presents it to a few special people.
They did not submit formal comment.
They did not?
The applicant can tell you more about it.
Okay. And notification, this property's pretty big. What does 300 feet mean? 300 feet from the borders of this property? Because I've always argued 300 feet is not enough, as the attorney knows. And I keep thinking 300 feet from the center, 300 feet from the edges of the property. I'm always concerned about notification.
Yeah, it's 300 feet from the borders of the property. And if that buffer even like touches one small corner of your property, you're still included in the notification list. So your entire property doesn't have to be within the 300-foot buffer for you to receive notification.
Okay. When were those mailed? Do you know? I mean, was it mailed well in advance of a CIC meeting? Because they're not having neighborhood association meetings for people to discuss it.
Typically, they're mailed after we deem the application complete, which was on March 20th. So I don't have the exact date in front of me, but I would guess late March, early April is when those were mailed out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Commissioner Johnson, any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Schlagenhoffer.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Stacks.
You have a question. So the condition is that the new recreation building is connected to the existing church? In some way?
Correct. The condition is that that... So right now, the proposal is to connect it via breezeway. We were just thinking about if in the future, for example, there's an addition to the back of the church, we want to make sure that that connection still remains so that that breezeway is not torn down or the plaza is not torn down.
Is that a new breezeway or an existing breezeway?
A new breezeway.
Okay. And that's shown on drawings that they submitted somewhere?
It is. I can pull it up in the presentation again.
And the way that they're basically not putting the building out on South End Road is by connecting the two buildings with this breezeway? Is that correct?
Correct. So the breezeway is kind of the key piece because there's no other way to attach the building to the church while still providing a buffer to the residential properties. So if the connection is not needed, then the building should be located near the street in the southwest corner where it's complying with those requirements for buildings to be near the street.
How do we decide... or how did the applicant decide the distance from the existing church to the new recreation building? Is there some requirement there of how close they are to each other?
I'll let the applicant fill in on that, but I believe there was some consideration as far as future expansions to the church.
I see. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I tag on to Commissioner Stacks' question? Mike, can I tag on to his question?
Sure, go ahead.
On the breezeway, so the building behind is going to be a lot bigger than the church itself. Is that correct with just a breezeway? From looking at those pictures, I couldn't tell. It seems like the biggest building is the one behind, not the one in front. Do we know the size of the front one compared to the back one?
I don't know the exact size. I know the new building is almost 15,000 square feet in size, 14,800.
And the church, existing church is? So and the other part of that question about the breezeway, so the way you can get around the rules and the codes is to just anybody could build a breezeway and build a bigger building behind it. Like Haymark could come in and build a big one, as long as they have a breezeway and with a house in front or something of that nature. I'm just trying to clarify how you can build something that big behind a smaller church with just a breezeway to solve the problem.
Regardless of if it's a standalone building or an addition, we would still want it to be up near the street. In this case, because the building includes a gymnasium, like basketball court and bleachers, that large footprint is kind of required for what the building is. It's not like they could shrink it down.
No, no.
So in this case, there isn't enough room to the north of the church to connect the building. There isn't enough room for a footprint of that size unless it was really close to the adjacent residential property.
My question is, a breezeway can solve anybody's problem if they want to build something bigger on the back of their property?
Not necessarily. There would have to be some reason, whether it's connected or not, why it isn't located up to the street. And in this case, the reason is the required large footprint of the building and the amount of room that they have on the other side of the church isn't enough to accommodate it.
Okay. I think that's okay, but I keep still thinking of a big story coming in saying, "We're going to put a breezeway from our small little one out front. We're going to have a bigger one behind us." That's what I was wondering if that can be done.
Not if they have enough room to do it near the street.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay, Tom, was that yet?
Yes. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Okay, I've got a couple of questions. The good neighbor agreement, is that something that we've done before in other cases in the past?
Yes, it is. It's something we've typically done. I know I can think of one, like assisted living facility that has one. Typically, they're established with the neighborhood association, or at least the ones I've seen. But in this case, in South End, is not an active neighborhood association. We require the good neighbor agreement for property owners within 300 feet of the site.
Is that in writing, Mike? Is that in writing, the good neighbor agreement?
Yeah, so what we're requiring for the good neighbor agreement is a primary contact person for the recreational center to facilitate timely communications and address concerns from neighbors as they occur, and then an invitation to a meeting for property owners within 300 feet of the property to discuss any concerns they may have with the use and just to establish a dialogue. And if the Planning Commission wants to add any other requirements for the good neighbor agreement, we can do that.
So on that, they indicated that the major use would be church members, but that it could be used by outside groups. Is there... would there be anything in that, or could there be anything in that good neighbor agreement that limits hours of usage for the building?
Yeah, I think so. If the Planning Commission wants to establish acceptable hours, we can revise the condition to include that.
And this is Laura Turway. You could do that through the conditional use criteria associated with the comp... there's comp plan criteria that talk about how it fits into the surrounding neighborhood and its appropriateness. So that is the actual criteria you would link to for your findings related to reduced hours, if you so choose.
Okay, that's something we can loop back around to when we deliberate. Another point, you require... you had a condition of approval that required some changes being made to the north elevation. And then you showed a drawing that included the north elevation. Is that... is that drawing before the applicant made any changes to meet your condition of approval?
Yes, this... the elevation drawings are before that condition of approval would be incorporated.
But what you showed us did not include...
No, it did not. So the applicant would incorporate those changes and submit them with the building permit.
Okay. The letter, the written letter that was received by a neighbor, she commented on two things. One was use of the parking lot, which you mentioned. The other thing that she mentioned was any possible change in the use of Paulson Drive, which I understand from the packet is now just emergency access. So is there any suggested... any proposed change being made to Paulson Drive as a part of their... present as a part of their application?
No, there was not. That would remain as is. Uh, no, there was not, that would remain um as is, the parking lot would expand, um you know, off of that access, but um no changes to the access are proposed.
Okay. Um, finally, and um this might be a question from Ms. Richter. Um. The breezeway, and, and then there was, i- in your um conditions was uh a couple of conditions or mentions related to future expansions. And I guess I just have a, a legal question, do we have the authority to um essentially tie the hands of a future planning commission? Um, by what we, by what we do now, can couldn't the applicant come before the planning commission later on, or, or is this, is this poured in cement if we say future expansions must do this?
So an applicant an applicant always has the ability to come before a planning commission in the future and seek to amend a conditional use approval. So let's say the code changes and buildings don't have to be at the street anymore. The applicant could come and seek removal of the condition that requires the breezeway and then eliminate the breezeway. And so, they could. Uh, they could.
What if the code, what if the code didn't change, what if somebody just wanted to try to do it without, you know, do this uh go against what is in these future expansion conditions that we said?
If they come to the planning commission to seek an amendment, they can do that. Whether they'll get it or not is a different question. But they can always ask to amend conditions of approval for any land use approval.
Okay, so, so basically, what, all we're doing, what, what we're doing is kind of putting our oar in the water and saying, hey, this is the way we think it ought to be, and that might indicate to a future planning commission that, that there's a little higher bar that they'd have to jump over.
Right, well, you're.
Because of what went into our decision.
Right, you're granting a modification to standards that are conditioned on the provision of a breezeway. Right, so the code would have to change, or the interpretation would have to change, and an applicant would come before the planning commission whenever they do that and ask to remove the breezeway, like maybe they'll want to do an addition. And that additional shorten the breezeway, or eliminate the need for the breezeway in some way, because it will connect the building some other way. So sure, then you would need to modify that condition to get rid of the breezeway, because you're going to connect the building some other way. Right, so you can always modify a land use approval in the future.
Okay. Any other questions for staff from the commissioners?
Yes, I do, oh, go ahead, you haven't asked yet.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's, it's a follow.
I'm sorry, Vern, I missed you on there.
Yeah, I'm hiding in a corner here, um. I, I heard your comment on the exit to roadway that goes out the back corner of the church property. And, and you made the statement that it was an emergency exit. And during my visit today, I drove and saw the, the gateway there and a sign, and it really doesn't say it's an emergency exit, it's an exit for services, or if there's something going on, it, it seems to be an ingress or egress during certain hours that the church may set as when their meetings are. Does, does that make a difference in? It's not, it's more than an emergency, I think. I think it's, the church could set the hours or days or the sign that's on that spot. And it could be at the church's discretion, or do we have something that conflicts with that, that it has to be called an emergency? I didn't see anything that said it was an emergency exit, that's my comment.
Um, that is my understanding, as far as this application is concerned. Um, neither of the access ways are changing. Um, so that wasn't something that we really evaluated or required one way or the other. Uh, based on the applicant's submittal, they had identified that e- everything related to the access ways is remaining the same, so if there are changes that are proposed, um then we can revise those findings or make conditions as needed.
Okay, then I have a question, and I'm not sure if it's for you, for the attorney, or for the applicant. And today's, um, and this is a really big concern of mine, it's um a Christian church. They're going to have sporting, they say it's for their use as well as for sporting events. And I'm wondering what kind of sporting events, because if it's a Christian church, are there in our codes that something like this has to be open for, let's just say some team comes with Muslims on it, or somebody gay on it, or something like that? Is it only for Christians, or is that open to other people too, if they're on a different team, so that's a big concern?
I, I can appreciate that that is your concern, but it's not germane to any of the land use criteria.
But it is for use of the code, isn't it, that the city of, city approves something, don't they have to be open to?
No, no, because it's not a public, it's a pri, it's a private operation, it's private, private facility, so um who they decide, whoever they decide to let use it, they can let use it just like any other property owner.
Okay, so not like a public schools where they have to be open to, to the, and be socially conscious, okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else for staff?
Dirk.
Yes.
Yeah, Richard Faganhofer.
Okay, thank you, um, yes, Commissioner Johnson brought up a good point, that this is a parking lot that is primarily used for church and church activities, which is normally Sundays. There's other events that happen at a church during the week, but it's primarily Sundays. And going to a um a building use like this, it's a completely different use, it could be used all week long. Uh, so I think we really need to look into his concern of the uh uh the access, and if we should put some limitations on any ingress and egress into that neighborhood, because we don't want to have um put a big burden on that neighborhood if uh you know, it's a shortcut for some people, and we don't want them, you know, driving by their house all week long. Boy, that's my concern.
Okay, maybe that's something that could be addressed by the applicant in their presentation, or, or uh, and we can also loop back on that uh when we deliberate, if we need to add, if we need to add something on that, is that agreeable?
Sounds good.
Okay. Alright, so we'll hear from the applicant, up to fifteen minutes for their presentation. And please introduce yourself and your city of residence.
I'm Iceland with Iceland Architects, um.
What was the name?
Todd Iceland, Iceland Architects, Oregon City.
Um, Laura, do you have the presentation that we did for CIC on the computer?
One moment.
I have it on a zip drive if you don't.
Because of the um social uh distancing, was everybody of the CIC present? Are most of them?
Um, I believe everyone except one or two people were present.
Not everybody, but yeah, there was a good turnout.
And we got very positive feedback, there was no negative feedback, um. Uh, this was also presented to the South End Neighborhood Association right before they became inactive. Um, never got meeting minutes, and it was a year ago, so uh we went back to the CIC, yeah, this project's been going on a long time. Um, initially, it was part of a master plan process. And because of a master plan for this church, they didn't want to be committed to constructing all the improvements that would be required at the master plan at a given timeframe. And the funding, as you know, with the church is always uncertain, and that's why they want to do this gymnasium, which will primarily be for youth sports, it will not necessarily be primarily for the church, is my understanding. And applicant um representative can speak for that. Um. We did satisfy the CIC requirement after several delays in getting that scheduled, Laura's got the presentation up here and um that we presented, there's a rendering, I believe a few pages on, that shows the church in conjunction with the, the proposed building, right there. Um, the church is larger predominant building. And that was the intent, and that's why we wanted to push this building back beyond. Eventually, the space in between the church, you'll see this is shown without the breezeway, but with the plaza still. And we would like to not construct the breezeway at this time. We don't feel that it's really necessary, um, we disagree with staff on whether or not the code really was intended to apply for a site like this. The code makes perfect sense where you have a commercial building and a commercial zone. Where you're pushing it up to the street, this is a residential area. You have open spaces, they want to preserve that open space. They want to preserve the security of the parking area, they don't want to hide the parking behind the building. Um. And we want to keep options for possibly a future building on the south end of the site where staff has identified this as being the appropriate location. There's some problems with that as well, if we put it on the south end of the site, that's where all of our stormwater goes, it there's a, about a twelve foot slope, I believe, from the north to the south end of that site. So we don't want to put the new building down in the hole and have it flooded out. Or raise it up, plus that creates some accessibility issues getting people back and forth from the church. So, we feel that this is the appropriate location where we cited it, and it allows for a future expansion of the church, which would at some point become a connection to this building. And that's why it's located the way it is. So that was the one one thing that we felt the planning commission could make an exception with, hopefully. Because we feel that it's bettering the intent of the code, and the intent of the code in this case is really not intended for a large suburban site like this. Um, we had one other exception with one of the conditions, and that's the one that's on page sixty-nine of your staff report. And that's a modification to the parking area. And it's um requiring that we um create a sawtooth pattern with the curb at the parking area for the forty-five degree angle parking. Um, that more than doubles your length of curb that would be required, adding considerable expense to this project, and we're trying to do this, and you know, as a community building, be responsible to the budget. And adding another seventy thousand dollars for curbing didn't seem like that was really going to help this project in any way. And it's not consistent with the way the existing parking is configured as well. So those are the two modifications that we would like addressed, hopefully with your approval this evening. And if there are any questions about the church operation, the pastor's here and Relji representing the church also.
Um. I'm not, I think this is more for you than for him, but um you, you were talking about the master plan of the church. And I started thinking, is this a membership requirement to be, to use this gymnasium? Is it have to be a member of the church, or are they going to have paid membership? So it's open to the local community?
I don't know anything about the operations, so.
Because if these, these people, these neighborhoods have that sitting there and they can't use it, that's what I was wondering.
Well, the intent, from my understanding, is it's going to be open to youth sports, the pastor has been a a basketball coach in Oregon City Youth Sports for years.
My other question probably goes more to you, we know about there's a concept plan for the South End. How does this fit in with the concept plan, or is that something of critical nature, I mean, there was a definite plan for how the South End was going to develop. How does this fit in with the concept plan?
I don't believe this property would be within the concept plan since it's already in the city limits.
Okay.
I think you're correct, the South End concept plan is further out.
Okay, didn't know for sure, secondly, you, your first um question was about the breezeway.
Mm-hmm.
So they do not want the breezeway, the city code requires it, how do we uh connect the two? I mean, if they don't want it and you feel it's important to follow the code, what's the middle ground?
Yeah, so our solution was providing the breezeway. Um, if the planning commission wants to make other findings for how the modification criteria are met. Um, that whatever the design is will be um a design that better meets the standard, and that the intent of the standard will be met, um, the planning commission can make those findings.
So my question is, is still involved in that, the standards are set for the city. And your suggest, the planning department's suggestion is to, for that breezeway. If there was no breezeway, then our standards are out, and this is setting a grandfather situation that other people can do the same thing without following the standards? You know what I'm asking? You, you've suggested that if there wasn't there.
I don't think that anyone's suggesting that the, the standards aren't going to be met, the
But it's a.
The, 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 the standards are that commercial buildings are going to be close to the street.
And institutional.
And, and, and institutional, sorry, and
What does that mean?
Institutional, this is an institutional building, not a commercial building, I'm sorry, it's an, it's not for revenue generation, right? So, um, that's what the standard says. They are not doing that, they are putting the building in the back. So they need a modification, the modification criteria are that you've better met the standard. And staff believes the breezeway does that. Could you make a finding that this better met standard is satisfied some other way? I don't know, but I think that's what the applicant is arguing.
I see, and then he had a second one about the moderation of the parking lot. Now, we have standards to parking lots, now if, if we do not agree with the city or with him, is there a happy medium, I mean, it's I'm, I'm, I know, what I'm getting at is we have standards, and this is going against those standards. And of, of what you've put down in your report. How do we go about making a decision when there's city standards and we hold other people to it?
Yeah, we have standards, and if the standard isn't being met, depending on what the standard is, our code provides for the modification process, um, where we can make the findings that whatever the alternative design is um overall will result in a better design, and it will meet the intent of the standard if it's even if it's not meeting it, you know, to the letter, um, so that is the um option for uh them for.
And there was no other way other than a breezeway to meet any or to get close to the standards? Breezeway was a so, solution up by the city?
Yeah, that was our solution, um, but there certainly could be other ways if the planning commission can make the findings that it results in a better design and that it meets the intent.
Wow.
This is Laura, just to jump.
We believe that the, the plaza that we've created is that element that would enable you to make that determination.
Hey, Laura?
Sorry, um, so there's a couple different things here, right? Um. It's essentially like the first phase of a master plan without the master plan, which sets up this problem of if you want future buildings on the street, you can't just build one on interior now, you have to address our code and its requirements. You have the legal, legal obligation as a planning commission to come up with findings to address our code. Whether you like the code standards or not, um, there's two ways that the applicant can go about this, right? They can apply for this modification that has a set, has criteria for how you meet it, better meets the standard, that kind of thing. They could have applied for a variance, and they also could have applied for a master plan, which would allow these interim things until the full thing is developed. They proposed just a site plan designer view with this modification, and so here we are. Um, so their proposal now does include a breeway, but breezeway, but you're hearing from them that they would not like to build the breezeway. If you want to um allow the removal of the breezeway, we would want really good findings as to why that meets our criteria, and how that's okay, just to assure that we are being level um and just through all of our applications over time. And then the other one you were talking about was the um
Parking lot.
Parking lot, um, Deliana, can you talk about what criteria um is applicable there for the curb?
Yeah, um, the condition that the applicant was referring to. Um, we have a standard that all areas in a parking lot that aren't being used for uh parking, maneuvering, or circulation have to be landscaped. Um, it is difficult to see on that drawing, but you can see along the southern border. Um, there are those little triangular um areas of pavement that are not being used for uh parking, circulation, or maneuvering, so the condition is that those areas are landscaped.
So is that because you don't want too much impervious surface and you want to have some greenery, green. some greenery, greenery to, to kind of break it up so it's not just one big huge cement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. You, you said something about modifications right now, and that it could apply for variance. Right now, it's just a modification to the, the plan, but they could come back and ask for variance at another point? Or is this the modification variance, the same thing together?
Variance criteria are different than modification criteria. They didn't apply for a variance. If they wanted to apply for a variance, we would have to renotice the application. So if you believe they meet variance criteria but not modification criteria, we could work on something related to that.
Part of my question right now, if we're just considering modification to just the plan itself, that's what we're doing right now, not, so they could come back and say, okay, we want a variance now. What difference would that make in our decision process, whether modifying it now or taking care of it as a variance?
The criteria are different for modification or a variance. So the cra, the threshold for modification is easier than a threshold for a variance. Um, they didn't apply for a variance. I, uh, as staff looking at the proposal, I'm struggling to see how not building a breezeway could be met by either a modification or a variance, but maybe they can provide some insight there.
I have so many questions, but I'm, this is a new one.
Yeah.
Well, even if we did build the building, the south end of the site as staff proposed, to try to meet that standard, we would still not be meeting the standard because the standard says you have to meet half, sixty percent of your frontage occupied by buildings. We, we can't afford to build that big of a building. This is a very large site, so.
I got a question for the applicant.
Okay. Mary Ellen?
Okay. Your preference, I understand you're talking about an expansion of the existing church behind it in about where the breezeway and some of those classrooms are there. Is that, is that your preference to put an expansion? And I realize we, we shouldn't be spending a lot of time on the expansion because it's not before us. But sometime in the future, you may be thinking of doing that. And would that be your preference to put an expansion several years down the road in that breezeway and classroom spot versus the south end street?
Definitely would be, just because of the topography of the site.
Yeah, you're, you're not going to put a swimming pool in the.
Right. Swimming pool's not in the program at this point.
So I don't know how we tie that together with tonight's decision directly, but.
You can't.
It is, I was looking for the applicant's preference of where they would like to put an expansion church sometime down the road.
Expansion would be a connection between the proposed building before you tonight and the existing church. That's where the future expansion would go.
But Vern, you can't really count on a, you can't really count on an expansion if that's so far in the future, and it's easy to tear out a breezeway if they want to put an expansion later.
And, and I don't know if.
Yeah.
If we can pin anybody down to.
Yeah.
Is your expansion going to be two years?
Commissioner Gage, do you have a question for the applicant?
Two years or ten years?
Not at this time.
And that's the big unknown. We don't know how long it would take.
Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Schlagenhauer, any questions for you?
Were you done, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I realized that my question was outside of the scope of some of this meeting.
Okay, okay. I do have a couple of questions, and they're questions that people have already been asking. But I don't know if we asked you specifically, the alternative parking lot access, the road. I can't remember, is it Paulson Drive? I'm not sure. Something like that. Does the church have any specific plans for that access?
I think.
Is it event access? What are they calling it?
Someone else can probably speak better to that.
Okay, all right. Well, we can wait until he comes up.
Let's, let's have questions for Mr. Iselin, and then we'll get another representative up there.
Gotcha, okay. Uh, going to the pavement issue with the parking lot. Did, did you ask about permeable surfaces in that area? Would that meet the standards? Did the staff answer that?
Is that what they asked?
Would that help?
Um, we do have, our code allows for an alternative landscaping plan. I would have to look at what exactly the standards for approving an alternative landscaping plan are.
Okay. You mean something other than cement or blacktop?
Yeah, you like those, those paver-looking things with gaps in between and grass? I mean, I don't know if that's a, if it would even save any money, but I know it, but if, if it's swampy near there, it may not even absorb any water, and it may not even be an option, so.
It is an area with a high water table.
So if you looked into it, wouldn't work?
Um, we didn't really look at pervious pavement. Again, we're looking at the bottom line for the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know much about it. I know there's applications for it, and there's times where it doesn't work, and I don't know if it costs money or doubles the budget. I just don't know. I'd ask. And then, um, I guess, I guess that's it. I got some other stuff, but it's more for deliberations later. So thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Stacks, any questions for the applicant?
Um, I'm not sure if this is for the applicant or not, but regarding the parking lot, landscape area condition, I wonder if that could all be done as a curbless condition so that it would reduce the cost of building that feature back there. But I don't, I don't know if the applicant has considered that or not.
We did look at that, and, you know, it's possible to do it that way, but the maintenance of it with that, all that exposed edge becomes a nightmare to do that.
It may be a solution to, to kind of balance the condition with the cost.
If we need to, that's a direction we would go. We'd prefer to not do that, though.
That's all I had, Mike.
Okay. Uh, just one quick thing for me. How long would the breezeway be?
I believe it was about a hundred and eighty-five feet.
Okay. Well, okay. Anything else for Mr. Iselin before we hear from another representative from the applicant?
Did, did you catch Patty?
He got Patty, yes.
Yes.
Is the breezeway open or closed?
It would be open.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Ken Swatman. I'm the lead pastor at Oregon City Christian Church.
What was the first name?
Uh, Ken Swatman. Um, I have been serving this church, we were down here on Ninth and Monroe, for about twenty-one years now. So been very, very active in the community. So I would be glad to answer any questions that you have about the operations and what our vision and intent are.
Who's going to go first?
Maybe just tell us a little bit about what your vision and intent are for the building.
We have always, um, we've always tried to be a community-oriented building. That's why we've landscaped the way that we have. We, when we originally built our building, we scrubbed our original building plan because we wanted to, and it was going to be in the south end of the property. But we originally scrubbed that plan and moved the building up, one, to be neighbor-friendly, and two, to be south end road-friendly as people came around the corner. There, they had something other than a giant wall to look at. So that, I mean, this has been part of our DNA as a church. We've intentionally left the field down there open so that people can run their dogs and people can walk. We, we intend on putting a walking path, a, not a concrete, but just a dirt walking path around the property. We've had multiple groups from DHS and their visitation groups to MOPS, mothers of preschoolers that use our building regularly. Right now, our church is partnering with the Pioneer Center and Meals on Wheels, and we're supplying, we're solely supplying a hundred and twenty-four households with fresh fruits and vegetables every week at our own cost as a church. So as you can see, we're very, we're very interested in our community. And part of our design plan is to maintain that community feel with our church. Part of the reason, and some of the things that we have to think about, just like a school has to think about, part of the reason for the placement of the building where it is is safety. On Sunday mornings, we have kids that will be going from one building to another building, and we need to ensure, we have a safety team in our church, but we need to ensure that those, that parents are comfortable and those children are safe and that parents have quick access to them on the site. So the difficulty, again, with moving to the south end of that is that we're not able to do that. So the other thing, as Todd mentioned, I, I coach youth basketball. I coached for Todd Chemis for, I can't tell you how many years, in the youth league here. And we have a lack of gym space in Oregon City. I mean, there were times where we would have four or five teams practicing in a gym during the basketball season, or indoor soccer, or volleyball. Part of our vision with this building would be to make it available at no cost to the city as long as they were able to manage their schedule. And just make sure, and we have, we have janitorial services as well. That's one of our big dreams in that. As to, uh, what you were asking about us being a church, and while it's, it's not within the scope of this to decide who we get to let use it or not, we wouldn't ask those questions of those sports teams whatsoever. That's not within our purview to do that as we're supplying something to the community. So ju, just so you're aware of that.
Thanks.
So anyway, I mean, that's the vision that we have. Everything that we've, we, we want our facility to be as inviting as Rivercrest Park so that people will want to come and walk around and have another green space, but as well-function as a church and supply something for the community. We recently had a funeral for one of our members, and we were trying to find a venue that had six hundred seats. Oregon City High School is the only venue in Oregon City that has six hundred seats. We would. So if there was a huge community-wide need for a meeting, or an event, or a memorial service, it would be available. I mean, that's, there's equal intent. Our, our people will be using it Wednesday night, Sunday night for a couple hours, and then maybe four hours on Sunday morning. Other than that, it's going to be open and available, as long as, you know, it's scheduled, there won't be charge. So anyway, that just gives you a little bit of sense of the vision of, of what we're trying to accomplish here and still fit within our community and be that seamless sort of residential into the church property.
I have two questions, and I'm going to jump in here because I think several of the commissioners probably have these same two questions. If you could address, number one, the use of Paulson Drive, how it, how it's used now, and would that change in any way and how that's controlled? And then the second thing would be what you anticipate hours and days of, that this building would be open?
Yeah, I'll address that. So when we originally developed this property, the city required us to put that access to Paulson Road in there for fire access. And that was, that was the, the whole intent of that. There's also by our shed, a little, a little gravel area gate that they required us to build so that fire trucks could get to the back of the building through the property. What we found out is that we weren't using Paulson Road access, others were, and that was the problem. We would have people coming in and out of Paulson Road. They would drive into our property, tear up our grass, you know, do cookies in the grass, and then sneak back into the neighborhood. So we, at our own expense, gated that. We were not asked to, we were not required to. We gated that, and we decided that the only time that gate is open is when we have services on Sunday morning during, other than that, that gate is closed at all times and would remain closed. There's no need for that gate to be open if there's youth sports going on or other things. The, the traffic study we did said that there was, there would be no impact to traffic based on our, our site plan and what we're doing. So we wouldn't have to open that any more than that short window of time on a Sunday morning.
Nor would we want to because they're, they're tearing up our property. How about hours of use of the building? When would it be open?
Well, the reality is, most of the sports activities take place on the weekend, and most of them don't go, youth sports don't go till late. You know, I, I think there are, there are general, general politeness rules. Our youth group, uh, to our neighborhood, our youth group does do some overnight activities, but they all are in the building the whole time for safety reasons. We don't go outside of the building. My guess is that the major use of the building would be on Saturdays and Sundays, and then occasional groups like MOPS in Thursday mornings or, but it would not be, it would not be open all of the time. I can't give you exact times, but I know that we're not going to be doing stuff late in there or super early in the morning.
Okay, Mike, I have some questions.
We have a list here if there's any questions. Commissioner Gage, anything for Mr. Swatman?
No.
Commissioner Gottle, anything else?
Yep. You can count it. I'm always full of questions. Most community centers are city financed when they're a community center, except you're, you just mentioned something there. You said there would be a charge. So you said that.
No, no charge.
They said there would be a charge. I wrote it down.
No charge.
No charge? Okay, I missed it. No, sorry. I apologize. But what my thought was, if this is a community center, it sounds more like it's youth-oriented rather than like a gym, like you see all these gyms popping up everywhere. So it's for youth sports.
Right.
So all the neighborhood probably won't be using it for just walking in, for running if it's raining or things like that. It's for youth.
Those, those are possibilities. I mean, I mean, those are possibilities that we haven't thought of looking down the road. I know I've had some, some, uh, Zumba groups that have asked, and my whole thing was, yeah, you could do that, but we're not for profit, so you, you would have to rent the space, being that you are a for-profit. But, I mean, that's part of the impetus of putting the path around as well. I mean, there are lots of opportunities that we haven't even just touched on.
So it's not like a weight room, a rating room? It's for this active sports, like team sports?
It's for active sports, like team sports.
One other thing you said, and I'm, maybe I got this wrong too, but you said the breezeway was for safety.
No, no. I said the placement of the building was for safety.
Behind it.
Behind it.
Because I thought you said, let me read, kids going from one building to another.
Right.
That's what you said, and I thought that's what you were referring to.
What I meant was, yeah, and I know, I understand that. So if, if the building is down here and our main building is up here, that means that we have to have kids dropped off down here, parents up in another facility. If we have an emergency, now we have to find a way to evacuate these kids, reconnect them versus having that shorter distance between the two buildings where parents can easily have access to where their children are, and our safety team can watch it. Our safety team can be more attentive to who's moving back and forth. That's what, that's what I was talking about placement.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Anything else?
No, Mike, not for me. Go ahead with the others.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
A good breakpoint, because I want to go right back to your kids' walking distance from the main church to the, anything like that. Kids in traffic don't mix together real well if you put a south end thing there.
Exactly.
The way they're, they've done it is the main church sits up to south end, and they're expanding back, and there's no parking, even, uh, church members don't park on the other, on the other side of the breezeway or the other side of either building. So I think it's, it's, it shows you putting some smart decisions and you're thinking the stuff through.
Well, thank you. Part of the other reason is, you know, we live in a culture today, I mean, we do have all of these safety issues, and churches are becoming more and more targets, their parking lots are becoming targets, their buildings are becoming targets. To have that property down on South End Road means that there is a natural hiding behind that property, behind that, that building where the street and we are not able to have visual. And that was the other concern with that.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Johnson, anything else?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Schlagenhauer?
Uh, my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Stacks?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, and I've already asked mine, so thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. You have a wonderful evening.
And we will move on now. Are there any representatives of authorized neighborhood associ, representatives of neighborhood associations wishing to comment? Okay, any members of the public wishing to comment? Okay, and I've already asked mine, so thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, you have a wonderful evening.
And we will move on now, are there any representatives of authorized neighborhood associ-, representatives of neighborhood associations wishing to comment? Okay, any members of the public wishing to comment?
The only question I have is there's an Aaron C. on here, and I was unclear on which item Aaron would like to speak on, if it's this item or the next.
Is Aaron C. in the audience?
Um, it's on the Zoom call.
Oh, on the Zoom.
Looks like he's called in, he's, he's, he has to be unmuted.
Aaron, do you mind muting?
I'm going to speak on the next issue, River Terrace.
Okay, it looks like we have two Arons on the Zoom call, there's Aaron Benson, and then there's also an Aaron C.
Yes, Aaron C.'s with, it's Aaron Clark, he's with Lenny Architecture, this is Sam Thomas.
Perfect.
I'm representing the applicant on the next item as well.
Okay, thank you, I will re-mute Aaron C. Thank you.
Okay, so then there's no one wishing to comment on this item? Right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, since this point, I'll close the public record, and we'll move on to deliberations by the commissioners, and we'll just go right down the list. Commissioner Gage, any comments?
I, I feel what they're wanting to do, it'll be a great asset to the community, so I, that's all I have to say, but I think it'll be a great asset.
Hey, do you want to make any comment on either the breezeway, or the, those little triangle areas in the parking lot?
No.
Okay. Move on, and Commissioner Guile?
I agree, it's a great asset to the community, but we're not here to discuss whether it's an asset or not, sorry Patty, we're here to discuss, I guess, the breezeway, and the parking lot, or just the, all the conditions you put on it, is that correct?
And the criteria.
The criteria. I don't often agree with everything the city says, but I agree in this case with the city about the breezeway, the need for it, and to connect them, because we're breaking with the code to even have that bigger building behind, and then not to have any form of any connection, connectivity, I think the breezeway is important. Parking lot, I do agree also that I've seen over the years, I've been on this, seven and a half years on this commission, and I, I see that the citizens usually are so upset about so much cement, they want it broken up with some kind of, of plant life, or greenery, or something, because it just, it's just one big huge parking lot, it's impervious surface, runoff, but they want something for the air, and the plants and bushes in between are important. So in this sense, I tend to agree with the, with the city's assessment on several of those, but primarily the, the breezeway and the parking lot. That's it for me.
Anything else you want to add at this point?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Comes down to the breezeway or the parking lot. I don't have too much to say about the parking lot, I, I guess I don't.
You can, you can comment on anything you want, I just want to, I'd like to hear what you think on those, those seem to be a little bit of contention.
Yep, my personal interest on that would be, put the priority on the breezeway, find an alternative way, and I wish I knew what that alternative way would be, that still allows it to meet the code. There's where the emphasis would be, because I, I think it's a logical expansion to go with the church behind there, and not tear out the breezeway, not have to deal with it. So I'm concerned with the breezeway, I think it should probably go away and something else take its place to meet the code. The parking, or the little triangle strips down there, I, I don't have a, I'm neutral.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Flanagan?
Uh, yeah, so on the parking lot, I don't know how much we can, we can decide on that, I know we've learned that parking is very specific code, and we are, we pretty much have to live with what the, what the design standards are. I think it's easier to, better just to leave that one alone, and leave that to, the way it is. The problem I have with this is the breezeway. Besides rain, and maybe severe sunlight, 185 feet for nothing, just to satisfy code seems a bit silly. I think, I'm not saying build a tunnel, which sounds much more expensive, but I think it would look better than, than a, than a unsightly breezeway that's basically there just to satisfy code and serves no other purpose. And that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Staggs?
If you look at the, if you look at the drawing package, it's, the breezeway is more like about 120 feet long, plus or minus. Just for everyone's information. I also have, I, I understand, I understand the intent of the code, the, and I understand staff's interest in meeting this, meeting the standard. I agree with the, I agree with the planning of the church and the architect to put this building where it's located, I think it makes a lot of sense for it to be where they put it. And the breezeway, helping the applicant meet this standard, is, is, is probably a very, is probably a low-cost solution. So I wonder what, I just wonder how that breezeway can be designed so that it's as low impact on the cost as possible, I know there's a bunch of ways to do that. I think also, just, I'd like to mention, I think it would be helpful in the winter, you know, when there's rain, you know, kids going back and forth, people going back and forth between the two buildings, that certainly would be a benefit to the church. So, but I understand the cost implications, I've been there many times myself, and I, I, I sympathize with that aspect of it. In terms of the landscape in the parking lot, the triangular areas, I'll just reiterate that maybe there's a solution to not doing a curb, and having a, a curbless zone back there. I don't, in terms of the impact in, in, in having, having less or more asphalt, I don't think is an issue at all, but I wonder if, if staff would accept a curbless condition, if the, if the applicant wanted to satisfy that, that condition, if there'd be any restriction with that. That's all I have.
Okay. I, I think the breezeway is an important part of this project, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Staggs just said, as far as usability. And it does tie those two buildings together, so that this, this new building is, is not really a new building, it, it's an expansion. And I, I agree with the site placement, I, I personally, I think the breezeway is an important part of it. The parking area, those, those triangles, it seems like we're really nitpicking at that point, and I think we could easily have a finding that due to how, the, the very, very low ground coverage of this total site, when you include both of these buildings, and both of the parking lots, they're still way under what our code would allow in terms of coverage. And I, I, I think to require those, we could easily have a finding that says that due to the fact that the ground coverage of the project is so low, that those triangles are not required to be landscaped. So those are my thoughts.
Mike, can I ask questions?
Anybody else want to loop back?
Mike, can I ask questions? How do you feel that that surface for the parking lot is so low? It's a huge parking lot, and I'm, and I was into Chris's comments, I keep thinking, without a little curb around plants, plants, I see them getting run over all the time. I mean, we even have outside of City Hall here, some, to protect the plants out there, we have curbs around the, what they call nature area or something, but how do you figure that the parking lot is low coverage, and that it doesn't, I'm not quite sure what you're saying.
It's a giant site.
Pardon?
It, it's a giant site, and, and perhaps staff can address that. But there's substantially less coverage of buildings and to, total buildings and total parking lots, when you look at that total site compared to what our code allows. There's a huge open area still, I don't know what the direction is, but at the bottom of the map, past that new parking lot, there's still a giant.
The map was up, and now it's gone.
I can go back, this is Laura too, if you are going in this direction, I would have some opinions on staff technical as well. So I just want to add real quick, if you're going in this direction, there needs to be fi-, there needs to be modification for this. The code says you got to put landscaping there, you have to add findings into the record as how that modification is met. Also, I would suggest adding a condition of approval to pay the modification fee, but so if, if we want to talk about this, perhaps Deliana could talk about, the first modification criteria talks about how the alternative will better meet the applicable standards, and the second one is how it meets the intent of the standards. Perhaps Ms. Vesleva can talk about the purpose of landscaping, and not having asphalt in a parking lot, so we can add those findings, if this is where the commission is going.
No, I wasn't.
I would also, as staff, be weary of creating a pattern of doing this again, and again, and again, because our code is pretty clear on what it wants. So is there something specific about this proposal that's different? Are you setting a precedent for something by allowing this? So just my hesitations. We get people who want to do more parking lot than less parking lot all the time. This is a very common condition of approval, so if we're going down this path, I want to make sure that you have actual legal findings tied to the criteria, and, yeah.
I just want to clarify, before you go back to deliberation, just to clarify, is the objection of the applicant to the landscaping, or to the curb, the amount of curb it takes to zigzag? I thought that that was the issue, and not trees or plantings.
Right, but the zigzag, I think was for ease and access, because, you know, instead of pulling in that way, but that's why the planners break that up.
Our code doesn't require the curb in this location. There might be really good stormwater reasons why you want a curb, or maintenance reasons as the applicant identified, but we don't require a curb. We require a curb in other locations, but not here.
Yeah, on the zig.
So there could be pavement up to planting?
There could be pavement up to planting, yeah.
At 45 degrees? There could be some 45-degree parking spaces, so there's going to be zigzag, zig, is the zigzag zigzag required?
No, they can design the, the parking angle any way they choose. It could be 90, flat, can be all sorts of ways.
So Carrie, can we ask, that in the city, is zigzag, I remember downtown Oregon City used to be zigzag, because you get more cars, and now it's all parallel parking, but does zigzag allow for more parking, or if you were to do straight in, is that, I mean, is there a, something that the city knows about, is one better than another?
It's all allowed, applicant's choice.
Applicant's choice. So you're right, Carrie, we'd need to know if it's the curb, or it's the zigzag that they're opposed to.
Well, I think that, that, I, what I heard was that it takes a lot of concrete to zigzag like that, but.
I don't see that on there, but.
I thought it was a zigzag in front of the cars.
Right, in front of the cars. In front of the cars, there's going to be zigzags, right? And that, they said that, that costs a lot, that takes a lot of concrete to zigzag.
In front of the park.
But maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Is he the devil?
Propose a condition that allows them to do 90-degree parking in this location, so there is no zigzag, they may have to modify the width of the drive aisle, and the parking stall dimensions to meet that, but if you want to provide that as an option for them, you certainly can.
So am I missing something? I'm looking closer now, there is a little triangle at the top of some of these parking, is that the, I guess we need to hear from them, is that what they're opposed to, is that little triangle there, because?
Yeah, the chair will have to reopen their record.
Mike?
Does the commissioner want to hear?
I do.
What the objections are?
Yes.
They do? Okay, all right, we'll reopen the public hearing then, and have the applicant come forward and give us a little more information about those, those objections, and, and if you have an alternative for us.
Okay.
Will we put the map back up though?
Sure. The objection is, the amount of additional curbing that would be required, because we don't want to have people driving onto the grass area, which is a problem, as we've heard from the pastor.
So it's the curb, not the zigzag?
Right, the zigzag, you know, we want the 45-degree angle parking to continue the circulation pattern of the existing, plus we want that area at the very bottom of the south side of the site to be used for storm drainage. That's the way the civil engineer has it designed right now. The little triangular pieces, we could eliminate those.
Was that curb?
Well, we could just put wheel stops in there, and have edges, and we could cut it out. The problem with that is, you get that raw edge of asphalt, which is going to erode and wear away over time, it's more maintenance. If we can just do a straight curb along the south end, that would be the simplest, the easiest for maintenance long-term, and save a significant amount of money as well. If we're required to do the crenelation, we can do it, it's just, again, it's, seems ridiculous, it's a lot of extra cost, and it's going to be additional long-term maintenance.
May I ask another question about your map, oh, it's just disappeared again?
Oh, sorry.
It said, and I didn't catch this earlier, existing parking spaces to be demolished, and there's kind of an arrow down, is it just what's across the top of the dotted line, or this is all new area down here, the parking?
Uh, it's just, I believe there were six or seven spaces.
That's just the only area to be demolished, and then, and the rest of this is all new parking?
The part that's hatched is all the new parking.
Hatched, the down below or up above?
Down below.
That's new.
That's new. And then up above, near the new building, we also have an additional 12 spaces, I believe, that are new.
How many spaces does that give you? I know we had a big question mark earlier, a few months back, about parking per.
We're, we're well in the range.
Yeah, they're within the range.
Right. So you have existing parking to be deleted here and up above, oh no, this is, the map is low, okay, never mind.
We're actually adding roughly 90 parking spaces, 88 or.
Uh, yeah, it looks like the maximum allowed by our code is 232, and they're proposing 215 total, uh, new and existing parking spaces.
How do you, what's that code based on? The membership of the church, or on the size of the facilities, or?
Um, it is.
The multiple uses and the sizes of each one of the uses. And we're, we're assuming they'll be used concurrently, even though most likely they will not be.
I only ask because we had questions about parking for commercial use earlier this year.
Uh, the figures that we're using are for auditoriums, meeting rooms, stadiums, religious assembly buildings, and it's based on the number of seats you get, or you're allowed a minimum of 2.5 parking stalls per seat, and no more than 0.5 parking stalls per seat.
So if it sounds like we all agree with all that, I'm not sure what Mike's going to say, but, but it sounds like it still comes down to the breezeway then. Mike, it's back to you. Mike, did you hear me, it comes back to you?
Well, I, I've, I've said what I wanted to say on, on, on both of the topics. Is there anything else for the applicant before I close the public hearing again?
Yeah, one quick question. Uh, looking at the parking lot map, I'm only seeing the curb that you'd have to zigzag on the south edge, is that the only place, or is that situation in other places?
You look at.
It didn't look like that many spots.
69 in your staff report.
The map keeps going away, sorry.
I think it's coming back. Scroll to the bottom?
It's not on the presentation here, but it was in the staff report.
Okay, is it the bottom spots? Okay, is it the bottom spots?
It is a bottom spot and then there were actually some other ones, the little island areas.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't seem like that many.
No, it's not that many.
Is that really seventy thousand to fix that?
I have not run a number. I, I just threw a number out and I probably should not have done that.
Okay, it looked like maybe twelve thousand, but I mean, I'm just making guesses. It does look like seventy.
It's a lot of lineal footage.
It is, but it's a six by six curb, has to go into the underneath a ways. Could be, probably maybe in between there somewhere. Okay, but that, but, uh, it's not all the way around. It's not in between them all.
No, it's primarily at the south end and at those islands and.
Okay.
Those islands, it just seems like, you know, such a little triangle piece.
No, I know it seems that way. I know it's just we're, we're caught, we're, we're stuck with code in some places and it's just, sometimes it's easier to, you know, just submit on some of them and then there's only so much we can do on them.
Right, but we do have.
Code says we, we have to.
Huge area of landscaping on this.
I, I understand that. Parking lots have code.
We want this parking lot to be there a long time without water maintenance.
Yeah, I understand. All right, that, that was it.
Okay, any, anything else for the applicant?
No.
All right, we'll close the public hearing again. And we're back to deliberation. I don't know if commissioners have more to say or if we're ready for a motion.
I, I have a question, Mike, as usual. Um, so on these codes, on what we're deciding, like, cause, um, can we pick individually say, okay, we're addressing the parking lot in this, we're addressing the, the, um, the breezeway? There were several other conditions, I believe, that were on there we haven't even talked about. We're just talking about those two main ones right now. Was everybody, I guess I'm wondering if everybody was comfortable with all the other changes. But if not, can we say we agree with one and not the other? Or we, we expect to have, um, we want the applicant to submit a different change to, uh, breezeway? If he doesn't, or they don't like what the city has proposed? I'm, I'm confused as to where we go from here.
You'll need certainty.
Laura could spell out.
Sorry, um.
The options, the options, as I understand them, it would be that we approve the application with conditions, with, with the conditions as laid out by staff, which would include the parking lot and, and the breezeway. Uh, or we approve the, uh, staff report with any added conditions that we want to add or removing any conditions. And I know if we remove any, then we have to have findings to support that. Now, did I, did I spell that out right? Maybe that, maybe this director needs to make sure I'm on the right track.
That's, that's generally right.
So how do we go on that, Mike? Do we, I'll speak up about which of those condition. I think we just have in, in our deliberations. But do we say we agree with the city as it stands or we don't? And this is why individually, do you want us to approach it one by one?
On those.
Well, I, I think at this point, I think at this point, we, maybe we, what we need is a motion from someone and then we can.
Okay.
Discuss and vote on that motion.
I make the motion then that we approve the, the, um, the standards. Is that the word, the standards or the findings of the city or the, um, conditions pu- put forth by the city? At, at least we'll get the ball rolling that way. I.
Planning file, GLUA.
I'm sorry, it's not on the screen slightly.
Twenty, yeah, twelve with conditions as proposed by staff.
Yes, that. I move that we adopt those.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
All right. Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion approved.
So to, to clarify now that we've taken the vote, they can come back and ask for variance later if they wanted to.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you to the applicant. And we will move on now to three B, which is GLUA nineteen dash zero 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 five two, application for a sixteen-bed expansion to an existing memory care facility on South End Road. Uh, first question would be, uh, for Ms. Turway. Has anybody joined the meeting that didn't hear the speech so that I can not do it again preferably?
You are safe.
All right.
Can you put the?
I like to hear that. Okay, then we will, um, we, uh, where am I?
I think asking.
Open the public hearing.
Before you do that, I think.
We're opening the public.
Think you need to ask the commissioners for ex parte contacts and conflicts of interest.
Right.
Because this is a different application.
Okay, so step number one, we'll open the public hearing for GLUA dash nineteen dash zero 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 five two. And we will go through the commissioners with the same three questions about site visit, ex parte contacts and conflict of interest. Commissioner Gage?
No ex parte, um, I have not been to the site and no conflict of interest.
Okay, Commissioner Guile?
Zero on both, not any contacts and not been by the site.
And no conflict of interest?
Oh, definitely not.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Um, no ex parte, no conflict of interest and drive by it quite regularly.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Uh, no ex parte contact, no conflict of interest and drove by a couple of times.
Okay, Commissioner Staggs?
Having a conflict of interest, I've had no ex parte contact and I have not visited the site. And can I just add one more thing? I need to plug my computer in. I'm gonna have to go off camera for like thirty seconds. Is that gonna be okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, and I have, uh, had no ex parte conflicts, no conflict of interest and I've driven by the site, but it has been a while. Uh, does any member of the audience wish to question any of the commissioners on the disclosures they've made?
No, not, not in the building.
Okay, all right. So we will move on to the staff report. Mr. Walter?
Good evening commissioners, it's good to see everybody. Um, the application before you this evening is, uh, located at nine one four South End Road. Um, it includes four applications, a conditional use, site plan and design review, a minor variance and a lot line abandonment. Can you all see my screen?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, so this is an application for a single-story addition of sixteen beds to a memory care facility, uh, for residents with, uh, various age-related mental impairments. The addition would be physically connected to the existing facility at nine fifty South End Road and, um, at, it is cited at nine one four South End Road. The applicant is Lenity Architecture Incorporated and the owner of property is Jeffrey Wellington. I believe both of them are in the chambers this evening and they have a presentation. Um, the property is zoned R ten. Um, there was a conditional use approval in twenty fourteen at nine fifty South End Road for thirty-one-bed facility. Uh, that facility was built and completed in twenty sixteen and it included nine parking spaces. Then again, in twenty eighteen, a, an expansion of seven beds. So now they have, uh, currently have thirty-eight beds. Um, the existing parcel is, uh, about almost forty thousand square feet, under an acre. And the existing building footprint is about sixteen thousand square feet. The proposal consists of a new single-story addition for an additional sixteen beds, which would make the total beds fifty-four. Um, building addition footprint would be approximately seven thousand square feet, bringing the total building footprint to twenty-three thousand four hundred square feet. The applicant's requesting a minor variance for Mac, of the, uh, maximum allowed lot coverage, which is in a residential zone, is forty percent of the lot. And they're requesting forty-six point two percent of the site be covered with, um, buildings. Uh, they also proposing three additional parking spaces at the rear. Um, and that would bring the total parking on-site to eleven spaces. They'd be taking out, and I'll show you this on the site plan, taking out one of the existing spaces to add a required, uh, landscaping island. And then there are some additional stormwater improvements and landscaping on the new, uh, property as well. This is an aerial photograph from twenty nineteen of the existing site. Um, the large rectangular parcel is where the existing facility is and then they're acquiring the property to the north, which is an existing house. Um, so the lot that the nine one four is approximately eleven thousand square foot parcel. So in total, um, the site is about fifty thousand square feet. This is a site plan excerpt, um, showing the existing building and the new building addition. Uh, I've highlighted the area that we're talking about tonight in blue here. And this is a zoomed in of that same area. Um, you can see over to the right here is South End Road, uh, which is the budding. And the property frontage is approximately seventy-two square feet there. Um, the proposed setbacks here will be residential and in setbacks, they're eight foot. Um, on the north side, this, uh, lot line that's existing now would be abandoned and make it one big lot. There's a twenty-foot setback from the property line to the building wall and then an at-grade patio, um, that is allowed to encroach into the setback because it's not taller than forty-two inches. Um, and then it would be surrounded by a wooden fence, um, as well as landscaping.
And then?
These are the building sections of the new proposed addition. So this south elevation, you would not be able to see it from the street. It's between the two buildings. The north elevation is facing the northern property line. Um, you can see the windows here. And, uh, so we have a requirement for, uh, thirty percent windows on the sides of the building, which is met. And then this is the east and west elevation. So the east elevation faces South End Road, so this is the front facade. And as you can see, they have large windows. Since this is an addition by nature of the, um, connection to the existing building through a breezeway, um, we're evaluating its transparency, you know, based on this facade and, uh, they're over their transparency on that. And then the west elevation, which is the rear, is what you see on, over here in the, in the bottom. Landscaping plan here, you're seeing, um, two separate cutaways. Uh, this is the landscaping proposal for the rear parking lot. Um, you can see that the new parking spaces that would be added to the north end of the parking lot are up here. Then the parking space that would be converted to an island is shown here. Preserving the existing landscape buffer around the north and west edge of the parking lot. And no proposals for changes to the southern portion of this site are included. So, um, where the new building addition is, is surrounded by extensive landscaping and screening. Um, in addition to the fencing, you have, uh, both vertical and horizontal landscaping elements. So that shrubs and trees. There is a gravel pathway proposed on the north side. You have a direct walkway connection, um, in a couple of locations. You have a walk here to a side entrance over here. But in terms of main entrance requirements under the city code, they are already met by the existing facility with the large main entry and port cochere that is there. And that is the main entrance to the building. Um, and then you can see where the breezeway is between the two. And then, uh, this is what you're seeing in these lines on the, in, are the interior floor plan. There's a proposal for a large filtration plant, planter to manage stormwater that'd be coming off the roof. Um, and that's gonna be, there's be some renderings that you'll see, uh, from the applicant's presentation soon to see what that will look like when it's fully landscaped. In addition, there will be full street improvements proposed on South End Road, extending the existing sidewalk northward from where it is now with, uh, planter strips, sorry, tree wells, um, and street trees in there. We have had some public comment, um, from Mr. Dan Morrison, who I believe is, uh, online with us this evening. Uh, his comments have to do with a civil matter that, uh, Kerry Richter can speak to in a little more detail. About a property ownership dispute that arose, uh, following the twenty sixteen. I believe when the twenty sixteen approval was before the planning commission, the same issue came up. And there's been some court, uh, decisions made since that time. However, these are civil matters. The let strip that is in dispute is between Amanda Court and the existing facility. And there are no proposed changes, either public nor private, in the strip that is, uh, under litigation between these two people. Um, and Mr. Morrison's comments do not indicate that a code criterion has not been met or cannot be met through the recommended conditions of approval. So we're evaluating this proposal based on the zoning code and the development criteria, which are listed here. Um, I, the chapters are all, uh, discussed in more detail in the staff report. Um, they include the conditional use criteria, um, which you're familiar with from the previous application, but they also include a, uh, variance criteria as well. We have a minor variance. And both conditional uses and variances, when they come before the planning commission, must also show that they are consistent with the applicable goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. So you have in your staff report, a selection of applicable goals and policies to show how the comprehensive plan is met for those two, two, uh, chapters, seventeen sixty and seventeen fifty-six. The remaining criteria are standard development review criteria that we would include in any staff report for a site plan and design review, um, that are listed here. Minor variance request is to slightly exceed the maximum lot coverage in the R ten zone for forty percent. The proposed lot coverage is forty-six point two percent. Um, and the criteria for granting that minor variance appear to be met, uh, listed them here. Um, I'm not gonna go into the responses that the applicant provided or my responses to those, but they are listed here and we can refer back to those if we need to. Um, and with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission do one of three things. Uh, either approve the application as recommended with the conditions of approval in the staff report. Or if you choose to make any amendments to the conditions of approval or to the findings, you can do that. Or if you choose to deny the application, we have to provide some findings based off of that. Um, are there any questions for me at this time?
Can we, can we take it back to the landscape view?
Who, who's talking?
That was Tom Guile requesting to go back to the landscape so we can look at it.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Go ahead now, Mike.
Well, I was gonna go in the order that we set up before. So we'll start with Commissioner Gage. Any questions for staff?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Then Commissioner Guile?
Um, just a clarification for Pete. Pete, you said something about, where's the wood fence? Cause I see in the back there it says, uh, um, wrought iron fence between the back neighbor.
They have a wrought iron fence that is being used. They, they're planning to relocate a wrought iron fence, but to use it to fence the patio area, interior patio. Not at the property. What's proposed at the property line is a cedar six-foot fence. There's currently a cedar six. There's currently a cedar six-foot fence on the north property line up to this point. And then it's a three-and-a-half-foot fence for a front yard. I think they're going to try to reuse part of that fence to continue to use a screening fence around the remainder of the site.
Okay, is, is there a resident behind the wrought iron at the very, right there where your arrow is?
To the west?
Yeah, is there somebody back there?
Yeah, let me show you the site plan.
Only because I'm wondering about privacy and if it was just a wrought iron fence versus wood.
This plan sheet shows the footprint of where the residence is at the back, I believe. It's not an aerial photograph, but I think the aerial, there it is. Shows where the house is, and that, that's about, you know, about a 30 to 40-foot setback. I would estimate, I don't know that.
And again, did, did you say it was going to be back there a wooden fence to give privacy to the neighbor? Or was it the wrought iron? I couldn't remember what you just said.
Well, I think the proposed fence, because there's, there's two, there's two fences here. And I think the applicant should talk about this in more detail. But one is wrought iron, and I think it's for security of the residents, because they're a memory care facility.
Yes.
And the other is a privacy fence.
Okay.
Which is wooden, yeah.
Because I remember this when it came before us, back in 2014 or 16, what the date you said. I remember there was some controversy over trees, but I see no trees there to cause any concern at this point. That's all I had.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
No questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Sorgenhoff?
I had something, and I lost it. Can we go back to the aerial photo?
Yeah.
Thank you. It seems like a big facility. Does that parking satisfy the city's minimums for parking for a facility that size?
Yes, under chapter 1752, the parking code, for an assisted living facility, all of their parking spaces needs are met on-site. So 11 spaces is right at the minimum number of spaces needed for a facility of this type. They also have on-street parking availability on Amanda Court, which is public right-of-way.
Okay.
As a member of that previous commission, when we decided, that was a major concern, was the parking that you brought up. A lot of, a lot of the neighbors didn't like the idea that they could use that street right there that you pointed at for overflow. They were concerned that it would cause problems for them getting in and out. I see that we, it looks like we went ahead and accepted it as it is. But I'm, I'm, as long as you're talking about parking, I'm wondering what about parking for the new facility? Or is this going to be sufficient for both buildings now?
Okay.
Yeah, it needs code.
It was a big controversy back then.
Thank you, Pete. Commissioner Sorgenhoff, or anything else?
Uh, that was it.
Okay, Commissioner Staggs?
Have no questions.
Okay, I just have a couple of real quick, can you, can you go back to that aerial view, Pete? I'm sorry.
The aerial or the site plan?
The, the satellite view. The one that looks like a Google Earth photo, the one you just had up.
Is that not showing up?
No, we're back to, I'm, I'm seeing all of the participants. You're not, you're not sharing your screen.
That must have clicked off, I apologize. How's that?
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, okay, so we talked about 119, the property that's marked 119. And this building is going on the 914. What's, what's just off the map, just off the photo up above 914, is that another residence?
Yes.
Yes, you, yeah, it's residential neighborhoods, R10 zoning. Okay, but, but then on that side of the proposed building, they are meeting the residential setback?
Yes.
Okay, the only other question I have is on the building, they're not asking for any variance from our design standards on window coverage or building modulation or whatever on any of the elevations in the new structure?
Good question.
No, they are not. The existing residence here, you can see is setback. And they're going to be adding on to that structure. And then adding landscaping and planter swale in front of it. And we're requiring as a condition of approval that they include a, they've proposed two pedestrian amenities, which include enhanced landscaping and some decorative pavement, I believe. We're requiring one additional pedestrian amenity, because the code requires that for each five foot back from the street, you're required to provide one additional amenity. And they provoke, they propose two. So the condition of approval is to provide three. And they can choose off of the list of nine what those are. I spoke to the applicant before this about that condition of approval, and they said that they wouldn't have any problem meeting that. So in terms of a design standard for, it's not a building design standard. It's, it's more of a pedestrian amenity space standard. Okay. Did we receive any comment from the property owner either on the one that's marked 119 or the one that's directly adjacent above the site, above the map there?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay.
Mike, I have one added question. Mike, I have one added question. Pete, you said that on the 914, Pete, you said that you're, that you're adding on to the back. You mean adding on to the space? Because that house will probably be demolished and something new will be built, won't it? Because you said adding on to the back of that.
The applicant's narrative indicates that they were going to be adding on to the back of it.
So they're keeping that existing house?
Well, I'm sure there'll be some significant interior remodel.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Yep. But in terms of some of the structural walls, I think they're going to remain. But I think the applicant should elaborate on that.
Could you put your, your hand, little thing, on where the breezeway would be in a relationship to this aerial?
Yeah, okay, I, I estimate it's right around here.
Okay, so, and it would come off that existing sidewalk off the other building over here? Not there, but over here in the mid, you see a sidewalk go over right there.
Oh, yeah, this, this one here, yeah, exactly. It comes in, there's a little alcove back here for a recycling and, you know, bins and a, and a bike stand that's there already, bicycle stand. And then there's landscaping strips coming here and then the breezeway itself.
Yeah, I may have missed it. I may have missed it, sorry.
Breezeway.
I may have missed it, Pete, is that breezeway for staff and employers? Or is that also for visiting guests? I'm wondering, is the front entrance still on 950? Or will be another entrance on 914?
The main entrance, based on the narrative, I believe, is still going to be at 950. There is a side-oriented doorway over here, but I don't believe it's for visitors. I would, I would ask the applicant to elaborate on that.
And again, I don't see the other, landscape. Is there any additional parking in the 914 area? There, there we are. And so the only parking is still going to be at the back of the, of the previous building?
Well, there's an ADA space here, a van space up front.
Are those new?
The 11th spot.
Are those new?
That's existing. That's existing.
So no new parking is, is being proposed?
Just the three new spaces at the rear.
What was there originally?
Uh...
Because we had, thought we had eight parking lots, so now there's 11?
It was a dirt patch back there.
Dirt patch? Okay. There I see it now, okay.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, nine, nine, and we're going to adding three and losing one, so 11.
Okay. So even if somebody has relatives or somebody in 914 area, they need to park here and somehow walk all the way around to the front to get into the entrance, to go through the pathway to go over to 914? I'm asking about accessibility for visiting relatives.
Yeah. I, I don't know the answer to that, Tom. I, I would, I would defer to the applicant.
Okay.
It's, it's more of a question of the internal workings of the facility itself, I think. And I, I honestly don't have a schedule for that yet. One of the conditions of approval is for them to provide their, some of the experts from their excerpts, sorry, from their state license when they get that underway, because it will be licensed by the Oregon Department of Human Services, and there'll be an operations plan for that sort of thing.
Okay.
It's not something that regulates under the development code.
Okay, Pete, I was just concerned about if we're only adding a few more parking spots, and that's going to be a, a facility that houses more people. Will there be a call for more parking? That's what I was thinking about, an accessibility again. Okay, thanks, Pete.
Yeah, you bet. Anything else for Mr. Walter? Okay, at this point, before we go to the applicant, I would like to ask Ms. Richter if there's any addition or clarification that she'd like to make on that legal matter, so that we don't get bogged down trying to figure out what the letter we received today is all about. Anything you care to enlighten us on that?
Sure. Mr. Walter did a nice job of sort of summarizing where staff is. Just so that the commission is clear, there is a title dispute. In other words, who owns the property? For the triangle directly to the west, so in the, off Amanda Court, there's a triangle to the left of the parking lot right there. See that triangle? That, there is a dispute about who owns that triangle. And there is a dispute over who owns a strip that abuts Amanda Court that is covered largely by the sidewalk. But also some other, a few things, these brick columns that are just to the north of the sidewalk, that is in this, this strip that is in dispute over who owns it. The city doesn't get involved in private property, real, real property disputes. And you may recall, some of you, when we went through this before, this same dispute was simmering. When we went through before, the matter was pending at Clackamas Circuit Court. There has been a ruling from the circuit court that Mr. Morrison owns those pieces. There is, with regard to the triangle, the triangle has nothing to do with this application. I mean, it's completely outside of anything. As for the strip, there is a public access easement there to allow the public to walk upon this area. So again, the question of who owns it is irrelevant to the city's review of a land use matter pursuant to the criteria. Does that make sense? So Clackamas Circuit Court says that Mr. Morrison owns the strip and the triangle. The applicant has appealed that decision to the Court of Appeals. So it is pending at the Court of Appeals. So it's still unknown who owns the strip and the triangle.
All these years later.
But I don't think it's relevant to our review, because there is nothing that happens with regard to this application, this addition, and the services that serve this addition that have anything to do with the area that is in dispute.
So there is a public right-of-way easement that the, and so even if somebody owns the property area, still the public has the right to use that area.
There's, there's an easement for the assisted living facility to use the strip. So however that shakes out, that easement exists.
And no matter how the lawsuit...
For purposes of, we're being asked to decide tonight. The applicant has the full legal right to go ahead with this application.
That's what I was going to ask.
In the, yes, if the, the alterations to the property that are proposed, the applicant controls that property.
Okay, any commissioners have any further questions for Ms. Richter?
Nope.
Before we hear from the applicant? All right, thank you very much. We'll hear from the applicant. You have up to 15 minutes.
I'm going to relinquish control of the screen here.
So Pete, Jeffrey Wellington is going to speak first. And then this is Sam Thomas. I will be remotely sharing my screen to do the second portion of the applicant, applicant presentation.
If you could please start with your name and city of residence?
Yeah, Jeffrey Wellington, Portland, Oregon. I'm the owner of the community. My background is I spent 14 years as a social worker. I then transitioned and worked as a nursing home administrator for three-plus years. So I'm intimately experienced and knowledge in the care of, of residents. We partnered with, about a year and a half ago, we partnered with a very well-regarded management company named Carrying Places Management. They've been managing assisted living and memory care communities for 29 years now. They managed 12 different communities in Washington and Oregon. I carefully vetted these folks, because I've seen the good, bad, and the ugly in this industry. And I'm interested in excellent care on a consistent basis. And been very, very pleased with how Carrying Places manages the community and provides top-notch care of, of the 21 residents who have dementia. And also ensuring that, that we hire good staff and treat them well and, and hold them accountable, and making sure that we provide excellent care. So that's a bit about, you know, my, my background and what we're about. I'm interested in, you know, ensuring that we, on a consistent basis, we provide good care. There's a lot of need for, you know, additional need for, for more care for a diverse population. So that's the purpose and reason why we've decided to expand our community and want to do so in a, in a responsible manner. To address very fair questions about transportation that I want to, want to highlight. I think those are very good questions. Point one, in terms of answering your question, dementia, memory care community, you don't have a need for, a huge need for parking, because obviously all the residents don't, they don't drive. So limitedly, you're going to have family members coming to the community. And of course, you're going to have staff members, you know, parking their cars. Generally, what I've noticed is staff members park in the back, whereas family members who visit, you know, during the course of the day or on the weekend are going to, are going to also, are going to park on Amanda Court. We also have a contractor agreement with the church right across the street to allow for six additional parking spots, which would continue. So that gives us six. And then, of course, Amanda Court, you have, you know, roughly 16 parking stalls. But the priority, and we've communicated this to all staff members when they're hired or, you know, throughout, throughout their time there, we're, we're ensuring that our staff members are parking in the back parking lot. And then secondly, if they're not parking there, they're parking across the street at the church, because we want to be respectful to the neighbors, you know, who are driving in and out. And, and yes, we can park there legally, of course. You know, the, the roadway is 32 feet wide, I've measured it personally. But we want to make sure that we are adhering to, you know, respectful of our neighbors. So as much as possible, we are using the back parking lot in the church. And frankly, to this point, we're, we're not maxed out on our parking. And I'm there on a day-to-day basis, so I've observed that. So at this point, I'll turn this over to Sam Thomas.
Who's Sam Thomas?
All right, I'm going to share my screen. My name is Sam Thomas. I'm with Lenity Architecture. I live in Salem, Oregon. All right, are you guys able to see the PowerPoint slide?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So as I said, my name is Sam Thomas. I'm with Lenity Architecture. I'm a senior land use specialist. We are doing the building design for the addition. Also have Aaron Clark, he's the project architect, who's available as well, if there's any questions that I can't answer. So we have a 38-bed existing memory care residence. And I want to clarify, the addition on 914 South End... addition on nine-fourteen South End Road will not utilize the existing home. That will be demolished in order to construct a completely new building that will be the sixteen-bed addition.
Thought so.
So, this is to serve memory care residents and patients that are receiving Medicaid. It's operated by Carrying Places Management, as Jeffrey explained, and the specialization is for residents that have Alzheimer's, dementia, or other forms of memory loss due to age. The memory care resident profile is a senior in their eighties, suffering from dementia or other age-related mental illness. They're in relatively good physical health, meaning they're not completely bedridden. They do have, you know, pretty good mobility to move around the facility. As far as the memory care operations go, their residents are provided nutritious meals prepared by a professional staff onsite, indoor physical and mental wellness activities. One of the main features of the addition is going to be a music room for music therapy for the residents. It is a, you know, a safe environment, secure facility. Residents aren't allowed to wander out of the building unassisted, and there are staff members onsite twenty-four-seven, year-round. So, to point to the proposed site plan, again, one thing I did wanna point out, too, was in the front, you have the porticus share, which is the covered entry, that serves as the main kind of drop-off for new visitors to the site, or to get folks out of their vehicles in order to get to the main entrance. And as Jeffrey pointed out, on the operations for staff parking in the rear of the facility, one thing I wanted to point out as well, there is a doorway at the new addition on the, toward to the sidewalk at the front along South End Road. But the main entrances will obviously remain at the existing building, and access is, operationally, will be through the breezeway, which is fully enclosed, does have doors to the outside on each side of the breezeway. The door at the front of the addition will be mainly for, to meet egress requirements in fire code. The proposed floor plan, Pete brought up briefly in his presentation, you have the living units on the exterior walls, on the north and south side. In the center, you have common spaces, dining, activity, and to the left is the music area with access to the outside patio. And there'll also be, you know, spaces for nursing staff, laundry, a small warming kitchen, where food will be prepared in the existing building in their professional kitchen and brought over to kind of a warming kitchen area that can be served to residents that live in this wing or this portion of the building. It's a one-story building, so we're probably be very conscious of the neighbors to the west and the north side. Here's an exterior rendering of the addition. As you can see, we'll have landscaping in the front. This doesn't show it, but the front planter that treats the stormwater will be in this area on both sides of the walkway to the door at the front. You have lots of windows that bring in natural light for residents, that they can sit kind of inside and enjoy the outside. This is a perspective of the existing building, porticus share, in relation to the addition to the right-hand side of the screen. So, architecturally, we're trying to keep the character, similar colors, materials, roofing materials, to kind of play off of the existing building, not changing that too much. You got the stone base, hardy siding, and composition shingles. And you can see, this is a concept of the street tree in the well here. This is just another view of the site looking southwest. As you can see, we've got, you know, keeping the roof forms lower, more residential, single story feel. And as mentioned, the fencing will be all-new on the north side with the neighbor and on the west side. The wrought iron fence is going to be a feature of the private patio on the addition side, but there will also be that level of screening with landscaping and the additional six-foot privacy fence on the shared property boundary. And this doesn't show the wrought iron, unfortunately, but this is a concept of the patio area on the rear of the property. So, you'd have, this would be the north side on the left of the screen, and this would be kind of a corner angle looking southeast. So, you'd have areas out here for residents to come out and enjoy the outside. And then, the entry doors would be into the music room. So, the idea is to have, you know, concerts and things like that that could potentially spill out where folks could sit outside while there's other people inside, you know, performing and kind of make it an indoor-outdoor space. And that concludes my presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or if I'm not able to answer them, Jeffrey, the owner, or Aaron Clark may be able to answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay, so commissioners from, questions from the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Gage.
I don't have any questions at the moment.
Okay. Commissioner Gage.
You know me. With the new building, that's gonna require some new staffing. How much, how many current staff do you have during the day at your current location? How many do you plan to add? Because that's gonna take up a lot of those eleven parking stalls. And you're correct, we don't have a lot of people coming and going, but you do have visitors. What's the current staffing, or what will it be? How much of that parking, all those parking spots will be taken up by staff?
I mean, I would guess, you know, if you're adding sixteen more residents, you're gonna add on a day shift, two more staff members. And say on a, so that's a six to two P.M. shift, a two to ten P.M. shift, you're adding one more person. Knock shift, maybe one more person.
Only one for sixty beds?
Just depending, I mean, two or potentially two or three on the evening, yeah. I mean, just sort of, to give you some perspective, on a nursing home, skilled nursing, which is a higher level of care than a memory care. On a day shift, you're, and there's, in Oregon, there's a regulation on this, it's a seven to one resident-to-employee ratio on an evening shift, it's nine-point-five to one. And so, then on a knock shift, it's seventeen to one. So, if you're kind of thinking about memory care, your ratio is gonna be, you're gonna have a few more residents, say, in terms of answering that question. So, that's kind of how I figured.
So, again, how many current staff are there now?
Total, I would say we have twenty-five, but again, we're twenty-four-seven.
Per shift, I mean.
Per shift, you're gonna have, on a day shift, you're gonna have, you know, say, ten, eleven employees, evening shift, so ten, two to ten. You know, and we're talking about management staff as well. You know, we're gonna say six or eight, ten people there, and knock shift, you're gonna have three or so.
So, you have eleven spots, that takes up all the spots with ten or eleven that you mentioned. So, then you talked about Amanda Court, and you said sixteen stalls, but it's more sixteen parallel parking, I would presume. But, and that, you said the width of Amanda Court was thirty-two feet. What is the standard width for a street for people to come in and going on a two-way street? Is there, Laura, do you know? Because I'm saying, if we're parking on that street and you have, expecting traffic to go two-way, that was a complaint before, people said they were gonna have to squeeze through that. And so, I'm asking her what the standard width is for cars and parking.
I can answer your question, but I also wanna say that they're accommodating all their parking needs onsite.
But they have eleven staff and they only have eleven spots.
But they're meeting their minimum and maximum.
What about visitors? They all have, that was the complaint, if you remember, back in years ago.
That is accounted into the minimum and maximum parking standards for each particular use in the code. They're different, you know, they're different based on uses, and so that does include visitors and parking. People can still park in the public parking, but just from the technical standpoint, if you believe that this conditional use is different and that the parking standard is wrong, that's sort of something a little bit different.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
They're meeting, so they're meeting their standards onsite. Our standard street width is fifty-four feet. I believe it is a standard section, if not wider.
Two cars can pass.
Yeah, so we don't have any concern on the width, but from, yeah.
And you said, well, you're something about not agreeing with the past. The past was a big decision on that, and now more of the parking spots that were available are gonna be taken up by more staffing for the new building. That was my concern. Before, we said, okay, there is some more parking available there, but now it's all gonna be taken up by staff at any given shift. So, it's gonna add more onto Amanda Court.
They're meeting their minimum, their maximum ratio. So, what about that ratio is incorrect? Why would we need more stalls?
Again, visitors and people coming to see their relatives, but if they're, now they're all gonna be pushed out on the street, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, the applicant can identify a little bit more about how to use fireworks.
I think you're raising a good point. Is there a-
This was a point brought up three or four years ago.
No, I hear this. We also remember, we have six stalls at the church right across the street.
Yeah.
That we use, and oftentimes, frankly, our staff go over there. So, then you sometimes have, you know, family members who park in the back parking lot. I personally have talked to thirty neighbors, I knocked on doors and talked to thirty neighbors, and asked them, what are your concerns? I wanna know what your concerns are. And certainly, several of them addressed parking. And there's been a couple times where, you know, I think early on in our operation, where they were saying, like, look, there's, why is everyone parking on the Amanda Court, you're not using your parking lot? So, then, as a result of that, you know, we're, we provide, we started to do staff, when we're doing our staff orientation, and on an ongoing basis, we're saying to people, our staff members, park in the back parking lot, you know, if that gets filled, then park in the church. But we wanna be, we need to be thoughtful to our neighbors to not park on Amanda Court. You know, that'll be used if visitors show up, or, and then they can park in the church parking lot. So, I hear your point, but I also think that we've-
I just know we discussed it previously here. So, my question is this, is South End Road a city street or road or county?
Sorry, it's awkward with Zoom, trying to, if you wanna direct him to Pete, he can answer. I don't wanna answer from him.
Okay, Pete, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Laura because you're not here. Oh, there you are, Pete. Is it county or city?
Yeah, South End Road is a, is a minor arterial road, so it has a wider right-of-way. There's bike lanes on it, and a wider sidewalk with tree wells. Amanda Court is a local-
The reason I'm asking, Pete, is there a possibility, if staff parked across the way for the convenience of people, elderly are typically the ones who visit their elderly friends in a memory care facility. I'm wondering if across the street, if there was a crosswalk there from the parking lot he referred to, for staff to park over there to allow more parking for the elderly, rather than have them cross South End, to have them be able to park behind the building to visit their elderly relatives? That's what I'm asking. Is there a possibility as a condition to put in a crosswalk from that other parking lot across the way?
I would not wanna explore that without talking to the Transportation Advisory Committee, the Public Works Department. Putting in crosswalks is a very detailed safety analysis and requires a lot more analysis than this applicant is required to provide. The applicant appears to have a private agreement for additional parking across the street, even though that is not required by the code. The parking is met. So, you know, the applicant proposed it, can propose it, but we have no code basis on which to require that.
Okay, I understand that.
Commissioner Gage, have you anything else?
Yes, I do. I'm concerned about that parking still. I mean, that's a big one for me because-
The bottom line is, not to cut you off, but the bottom line is, they have met our code with the onsite parking that they have.
You know, some-
Whether we think that's enough or not.
Mike is-
We have a code that we go by.
Mike is, again, Mike, as someone who's had people in memory care before, I understand that we have a code for it, but I also understand that there's elderly who visit. I mean, I've had several people pass away in memory care, and I see completely the need for it, but I also see the need for parking for the elderly who are visiting, and it's all being taken up by staff. That was my concern. So, now I'm gonna go to the next thing. The front windows that he showed, I mean, they were like paying glass, but is there privacy for the residents who are in there so they don't have people out in the street watching them and seeing everything they're doing in those front windows? I don't see any screening in the front for the front windows. That was part of it for patient privacy, because I didn't see any front fence. And I noticed that you had the area behind there for entertainment, but is there a gateway that they cannot go out beyond that, out to the street? Again, having had relatives who have escaped facilities and have been pretty unruly, I know that these are concerns.
I'm gonna defer to Sam on those two questions.
Yeah, so the front, you know, it is more of a living area, the front windows looking in. So, these aren't residents' private rooms that would be visible from the front of the street of people passing by. But there would be, you know, based on the lighting and things like that, there could be, you know, it's not gonna be completely transparent glass that's gonna be visible to the inside. Regarding the back, that was the patio area. The wrought iron fence would be one of the safety fencing items on that patio, so it would be a little bit on a raised wall around the perimeter, and that would provide, you know, a means to keep people from getting out. I think Jeffrey could speak more, too, how that would work operationally, but the intent, obviously, the, you know, residents getting out of the facility unassisted would be a major concern of his, and, you know, staff would be onsite to monitor residents that would enjoy that outside area.
Okay. All right, I guess I'm not getting any satisfaction on visitors' parking, so we'll move forward. I'm done.
Anything else, Commissioner Gage?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioner Gage?
I really don't have any issues. I think it's great to hear them coming back to expand. They must have done something right with the first one, that, and I haven't heard very many complaints about the first one. I don't think you're gonna downgrade your standards or anything for this addition. You're meeting the city codes. I'm pretty much satisfied with what you've applied for and what the city's code is. I don't see much of a weakness anyplace.
Okay. Commissioner Schoninger, any questions?
A couple small ones. I, the first one, it's about the parking, and I should note this answer, and I apologize for asking it, but what is the purpose for converting one of the parking spaces to, is it landscaping?
Yeah, the code requires a parking, sorry, a landscaping island for every eight spaces.
Okay, all right.
That's it.
Okay. And then, the other, the other issue they're asking a variance on is the, is it the lot coverage, forty-six percent to-
Yeah, a minor variance of lot coverage, taking into account the entire site. So, the existing parcel plus the nine-one-four parcel.
Okay, and that amount of overage, that's considered minor?
Yeah, up to twenty-five percent is considered a minor variance.
Okay, okay, that was it. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Staggs, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, and I don't have any questions either, so thank you to the applicant. Stand by if we need you for any rebuttal after we go through public comments. All right, we'll move on to public comments. Do we have any comments from representatives of neighborhood associations?
We do not.
Okay. Any comments from the general public?
We do have Mr. Dan Morrison with a comment. He'll need-
Okay, Mr. Morrison, we'll get to unmuted here, and you have three minutes. Please start with stating your name and city of residence for the record. Please start with stating your name and city of residence for the record and you have three minutes for your comments.
Yes, my name is Dan Morrison, Oregon City. I live in Oregon City, up at South End Road. And I guess my concern is, obviously I've retained the property back, the side parcel, it's actually seventeen, almost eighteen feet from the curb into their property. And right now I have all the utilities sitting on my property, not on just the east mints, but also their columns are sitting on my property. And I've been working with Steve Wellington to come up with a resolution to try to get those removed off my property. And I, I know we're going through an appeal period, but it's not really going to change the fact that the property was never owned by the building. So I right now have pretty much all the utilities and their sewer, main sewer line running through my property attaching to Amanda Court. So just needs to be all of that addressed with the city. I tried to bring this up in two thousand and eighteen, but I just didn't have the judgment at the time from the court. So that's pretty much my concern with moving forward, doing any more work on that bill, on that property until at least that, those are addressed and those items are removed off the property that is, and also with the extensions that were done to the building itself, they are now encroaching on my setback. So those are some serious issues that need to be addressed because I am going to get to a point where I would like to be able to take possession of my property. That's pretty much.
Is that it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Laura, do we have any other comments?
I'm not seeing any unless there's anyone who is on the Zoom call that would like to speak that has not.
Who are all these other errands?
The other errands.
And a Josh.
Josh is our assistant city engineer.
Josh is a city engineer, right?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So the errands are on another subject?
I think the errands are with the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Hi, this is Aaron Clark with Leonard the Architecture and I'm with the applicant and I have no comments.
Okay, Laura, so there's no other public comments?
Correct.
Okay, so then for the applicant, you're entitled right now for rebuttal if you want to do that?
That's you.
No further comments from me.
I think Aaron, Aaron Besson might have something.
Yes, this is Aaron Besson. I'm a resident of Portland, Oregon. I am an attorney for the applicant. I just want to point out that, you know, as previously stated, the new development that is proposed is on the north side of the building. The strip contested by Mr. Morrison is on the south side of the building. This is, as stated previously, a civil matter. The applicant has appealed the decision in Mr. Morrison's affiliates' favor with respect to the ownership of the strip. We have asked for a stay of the judgment. And if it is necessary to ultimately move any of the utilities, we will address it at that time.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else from the applicant? All right. At that point, I think we are finished with the public portion of the meeting, so I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to deliberations by the commissioners. Commissioner Gage, anything you want to say?
I'm not concerned about the parking situation and that's all for now.
Okay. Commissioner Gage?
Well, I know you're going to disagree with me and everyone else is, but I was on the commission years ago when this was talked about. So I know we have a code that says that the minimum is met for, I'm not sure for private or commercial or what, but I don't think that the, I don't think that the parking code was ever meant that a whole staff could park there and eliminate the, we came across this a few months ago with a, with a vet area and to make everybody forced to park on the street, I don't think is right. And I think it's morally, morally objectionable that the code doesn't say that that's just for staff or something like that. It should be open so that there's more for the public. So that's my opinion. I'm just morally opposed to pushing everybody out on the street, especially when there's senior citizens visiting, in my opinion. I'm done.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, by the way, I want to say, I totally agree with the need for it, totally agree with the variance, I totally agree with everything. It's only about the parking.
Understood. Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing new?
Okay. Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
No, I voiced my concerns.
Commissioner Staggs?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
Any, any comments?
No.
Okay, and I don't have anything to add at this point. So unless any of the other commissioners want to say anything, we're ready to entertain a motion.
That's not going to come from me.
Well, I'll make the motion. And I guess we're, I'll start and Laura will probably correct me along the way. G L U A zero 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 five two. And it deals with a lot line adjustment, lot coverage, minor variance.
Yep. Just approval of glue at nineteen fifty-two with all the zeros that you said.
Okay.
With conditions as proposed by his staff.
There a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Johnson and seconded by Commissioner Schlagenhoffer. Call the roll.
Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Staggs?
Aye.
Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you to the applicant. We'll move on to general business for a Oregon City two thousand and forty update of our comprehensive plan. Mr. Walter?
Did we lose Pete?
Pete, if you're speaking, we're not hearing you.
Well, the meeting's over.
Okay, can you hear me now? Yes, there we go.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Right. Thanks for joining us, Pete.
And then just for the record.
Sorry, one moment.
While he's gearing up, I just want to acknowledge that it's nine-thirty-nine and so as we roll up on the ten o'clock hour, we have to have a majority of the commission that would want to go after ten, should you choose to. So I'm just putting parameters on the meeting. As we know, you can go till eleven if you have a majority of the commission, say so. We have this agenda item and then we also have a request letter of support after this. And then I don't have any communications from me.
How long is this presentation going to go and should we make that decision now?
Not long. Nine, eleven, eleven slides.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you see that?
Yep.
Yeah. Nice logo.
Yeah, there's a story about the logo. So the comprehensive plan update is, its brand is OC two thousand and forty. The website is OC two thousand and forty dot com. This is the first major update of the comprehensive plan since it was adopted in two thousand and three. So what is the comprehensive plan? It is a roadmap for decision-making of city staff and officials. And we use the goals and policies of the plan to evaluate and make decisions that affect every aspect of the community and affect neighborhoods, transportation, land use and a variety of other topics. It is a document that's required to comply with statewide land use goals, but it is much more than that. It is a living and working document that is based on a shared community vision. And that community vision sets the stage for how the comprehensive plan guides the community. The procedure, the process that we anticipate for this is basically three major phases. Starting with a community vision. And then once we have a community vision, the community visioning process will be about a year's worth of work. We have hired a consultant, Three J, who's helping us with that portion of the project and we're just kicking that off now. It is an in-depth process of listening to the community. And until that vision is adopted by the community, we will not be writing chapters of the comprehensive plan. So for this very first part of the commu, of the process, we're really asking two questions. What do you like about Oregon City now and what would you change in the future? And then we're just going to listen, we're going to record and we're going to reach out to the community as broadly as possible. The timeline, starting now through October, will be doing the visioning outreach, creating the community vision between October and January of two thousand and twenty-one and then updating the comprehensive plan based on the vision from January two thousand and twenty-one through July of two thousand and twenty-one. And then we would go to the adoption process. And every step of the way, we'll be doing community engagement. And we are committed to an early and frequent engagement process through a variety of means. And the whole focus of this outreach process, and I can't stress this strongly enough, is it is based on equity this, this time around. We have relied upon traditional public outreach efforts for the majority of our planning efforts in the past. And we've oftentimes not been able to engage the entire community. So the focus of this visioning process will be to lift up the voices of every community member and especially underrepresented populations such as communities of color and those who are challenged in their economic situation and homeless and those who are pinched for housing. And we, the reason we were doing that is because we want to understand how to serve those communities better. We have at our disposal a variety of incentives that we hope to incorporate to help get people to the table. We've budgeted for the use of gift cards and a whole thing, a whole host of things. The Three J has outlined, you know, the basics, basis for in the community engagement plan in a little, in a lot more detail. And that equity focus is something that we've taken so seriously that we're, we put a equity resource section on our, so that people can go there and understand what we're talking about. We have videos that talk about housing, we have videos that talk about what equity means. And we also talking about the history of racism that has been perpetuated through land use policies nationwide, oftentimes unknowingly or implicitly by well, by governments and planners. And that is something that we're working to reconcile. It's something that there's been a lot of focus on throughout, throughout the country over the last five years and it's really coming to bear on this comprehensive plan update. And I think that you're aware that based on the current social environment that we're going through, this comprehensive plan update really is a vehicle to focus on that and move things forward.
Very well stated, Pete.
So the objective is for a robust and equitable outreach program, timely, transparent and accurate information to be shared with the community throughout the process. We will have a representative cross-section of all Oregon City residents, businesses and partners, consulting the community in the policy updates and ensuring that people understand how their concerns are heard and how those concerns are incorporated into the decision-making process and how their feedback influences city decisions. This has to be a culturally and linguistically appropriate outreach process. We're going to be translating all of our documents into Spanish. And we want people to be, feel safe and comfortable when they give their feedback because people are wary of government. Local government sometimes less so, but certainly we're lumped in with government every time we do something. So if people aren't safe sharing their concerns, they're not going to be candid about it. And so we feel that with the help of the community and with our consultants, that we can accomplish this. Let's see. Communication tools listed here include the logo and the branding for this, for this update. We'll have key messages that I'm going to talk about briefly. We have our website up. We'll be making constant adjustments to the website, updating it with meeting information, resources, information for the project advisory team, media releases. We're also going to be doing mailed notices at three points throughout the process citywide, starting with a postcard that will be going out in a couple of weeks' time to the entire community to let them know about the vision process and what the basic questions that we're asking are, directing them to the website, directing them to the mailing list, getting them involved that way. We will have an email list that we started to compile and we'll be tracking every comment we get on an internal database that we can take to show you throughout the process. The activities that go into this plan include having a project advisory team, coordinating on a regular basis through the Citizen Involvement Committee. We'll be having what are called community conversations and those are where we equip the project advisory team members with a kit for, that they can use and know how to use to amplify the city's efforts for outreach. So when we're, you know, saying, ask these questions, take this feedback, here's the kit, we would like every member of the project advisory team to accomplish at least five of these conversations. So we're going to get an exponential amount of feedback using that process. We really need to rely heavily on the project advisory team to do this and provide inroads into the community. But we're going to provide the tools to do that. And Three J, who have done this successfully in many other communities and use these kits, are pretty excited about being able to use those kits here.
And Pete, can I add? Can I add one thing to that, Pete? And that, that is.
Yeah, go for it.
We thank you for volunteering on the planning commission and.
Absolutely.
As a reward for all of your help for the city, you also get to do, take these kits. So not just the advisory team members, but everyone on advisory boards will also take the kits to figure.
So you're volunteering for that now? Good.
Yeah, I mean, you.
We're then volunteered.
Yes, you also get to talk to your friends and your neighbors and your neighborhood association and everybody else as well to get more input. I think the success of this project is based on having as many people get as much input as possible, as well as making sure that we pay attention to get input from those that we normally don't, right? And so we'll be relying on you guys for that broader engagement through, through the community conversations, among other tools that Pete talked about.
So Laura, now so we don't overstep each other and step on each other's toes, have you already got a project advisory committee and so we don't interfere in our neighborhood associations or with this group or that? Do you have a, this is your group, your group, your group? Because sometimes you're going to overlap the same opinions.
I'll defer to Pete. I'm done interrupting. I just want to highlight, you guys have to do some of this work too. You get to join us in this effort. It's a citywide effort and we're glad you can be a part of it.
Yeah, this project advisory team's really large. It's kind of a, it's a twenty-seven position project advisory team. It's, it's kind of a, it's a 27-position project advisory team, um, including ad hoc staff and agencies that, in addition to that. And so we'll have formal positions for planning commission. We wanna choose, uh, two members tonight for the primary and alternate position for planning commission on the committee. But, um, in your packet, you can see the, uh, project advisory team positions. And we added three more in the last two weeks in response to some of the applicants' questions. We've gotten 24 applications so far. Um, I think we're, we extended the deadline through Wednesday evening. Um, and I'm feeling pretty good about being able to fill all of those, um, positions. We have, uh, some youth applicants. We have a lot of people interested in community health. Um, but, and we got a lot of applications for people who are highly skilled in a lot of different things that wanna be at-large. Um, so it will, you know, we'll sift through those and make sure that everybody feels comfortable in the role that they're in. And there's room for overlap. So if a person can serve in two capacities, it's gonna be a little bit easier to, uh, manage that team. I, I'd also mention that, you know, this activity list that you see here is, is a, is a big list, but where applicable, alternative strategies, um, are discussed in the engagement plan for in-person gatherings, because we're, there are a lot of uncertainties surrounding COVID-19. We had to adapt the, uh, engagement plan on the fly to adjust for that. Um, and we anticipate a lot of these meetings for the foreseeable future will be online through Zoom, uh, using whatever media that people have access to, including their smartphones and cellphones. Um, but prior to initiating each of these activities, we're gonna assess the situation and refine the strategy or approach to make sure that we are engaging people to the extent that we can.
Pete, can I have an answer, ask a question?
Go for it.
Uh, you mentioned COVID and I was gonna ask that later. Uh, you said, uh, the, doing it online with a lot of these people. A lot of the elderly don't have access to computers or don't know how to use Zoom. I don't even know how to use Zoom. I couldn't get it to work tonight. Um, so if COVID continues and we have a, uh, and continuous of this into the fall, is there room for this, uh, program to be moved out a little bit further? Or you've got a strict, uh, guideline or a deadline for each of those steps that you outlined on the, on the previous map? Or, you know, the timeline?
We do have a schedule and deadline for deliverables right now. I believe, uh, uh, there was a similar question from the Citizen Involvement Committee about that issue and the need to build in some additional time in case we need to for a variety of reasons. Um, so we'll just have to take a look at the situation as we go.
Yeah, when you think about it, there's homeless, there's the homeless, there's the unprivileged.
There are gonna be other means besides just online too. We'll have, we'll, some paper surveys as well.
What I was starting to say there, Pete, is, because I realize this has been in surveys before that the city's done, but, but if you wanna really reach out to people, homeless people don't really have the access. The underprivileged, the lower-income people don't always have computers, as well as the seniors. There's so many variables there where people don't have access or don't even know these things are going on. That's why I was asking if we can't have public meetings, how we do it.
Absolutely, Tom. It's, it's a concern. We're gonna have to go to where people are. Staff's gonna have to do additional legwork to make the, make that additional engagement and contact.
Are the city commissioners involved in that? Are they gonna be-
Why, our project advisory team is so large.
Good.
Um, sorry. So, uh, the initial listening phase for this visioning process will start now and continue through October. Uh, then we'll have a four-month period where we're crafting the vision. And as I mentioned before, that's, after that, the vision is adopted by resolution of the city, city commission, and then we'll start the, uh, update process. The way that the comprehensive plan is organized, um, we anticipate it's not gonna be like the current comprehensive plan where you have a chapter by chapter by chapter associated with every single land use goal. Um, it will address land use goals. Uh, it has to address land use goals, but we want it to be an approachable document. And so there's gonna be fewer, fewer chapters and they're, and they're gonna be more readable. Um, so that is our approach for now. Um, and thank you for listening. If you have any suggestions that you care to make right now, I'm just gonna listen and record it, record everything, um, and write it down. And you can always contact me and Laura with things after, after this meeting as well, as things come to your mind.
Is, is that the end of your presentation, Pete?
Yes, it is, thanks.
Then I have a question about the photo contest. Having done some, uh, local ones and being a professional photographer in my past, what is the photo contest about?
Laura, can you elaborate on the photo contest idea?
Yeah, I think we want to do, there's a few different purposes. One is to ask people, like, where's your favorite place in Oregon City? Or some, things like that. So we start to understand what people like about Oregon City, so we make sure that we can preserve that. And then also, um, we can have, use photo contests to ask, what are places that you like outside Oregon City that you want us to be like, or that you don't want us to be like? And then the idea is to take those photos and use that as content in visual preference surveys later. So maybe we take a couple of those photos and then through social media, we say like, you know, do you like photo A or photo B better? And so we didn't, we were careful that we didn't want to influence what people said by us selecting the pictures in advance. Like, maybe we only give you pictures we like, so then you choose an image we like. We didn't wanna do that, right? So we wanted to make sure that we get content from the community so that this project really is from the community, for the community.
So it's not literally a contest with like ribbon awards? It's more of these, sending your photo examples into us? That's not a, not an actual contest? That's more of, here's what we'd like to use in a presentation, so?
Uh, we do have, and Pete talked about a series of contests and drawings and things like that that we can do too, and us using the gift cards, um, for restaurants that are open during COVID, um, from, uh, people of color to give as rewards for some of those. And so, um, the details are-
I was gonna say, are they gonna be real? So it's local photographers or local people rather than people from all over the state? And now Washington is gonna be local, locally driven?
Yeah, I mean, the project should be locally driven. And that's the thing where like, you know, I hope that we all get a chance, or you all get a chance to go talk to all your neighbors and to help provide that. I mean, there's certainly online mechanisms. And the, the more complicated you make things, the less likely people are going to participate. So on some of our longer surveys, we can ask for, um, data about where people live and that kind of thing. But we really wanna just get responses. And so, um, one of the things, uh, yeah, Pete had probably mentioned, um, was the survey that we're, in August, the city is doing the citywide survey that we're doing both online versions, but there is also the mailed version to all the residents in Oregon City, uh, not all, some residents in Oregon City to do a statistically valid, community-wide survey. So we did it two years ago. It's time to do it again. It's perfect timing for this project, because we can ask what people like, um, about Oregon City who wanna see in the future. And so we will have some statistically valid responses, but the idea is just to get input.
Right.
And the way that we get input through COVID is using a network of people and they just talk to their neighbors. And then, you know, we start to establish relationships with community members we never had before. And then that grows.
Well, I know that all the citywide events that they used to do surveys at downtown, all those events are canceled. That was such a great location, because I know Denise, other people, we'd be down there handing out surveys. And now we can't even have any of those events to do it, so.
Yeah, though, there's passive posters that'll happen too. So we can set up stuff in libraries and, um, uh, Doka has identified, like, you know, we could put stuff on their windows for passerbyers to write comments and things like that, so.
Okay, commissioners, we have hit 10 o'clock. And so we need, uh, agreement from the group to go forward. I'm gonna guess, we, I'm gonna say 10 minutes more, tops. Um, we need a majority to go forward. So just to keep this simple, does anybody, anybody who objects to continuing for a few more minutes, please speak up now, otherwise, don't say anything.
Um, not more than 10 minutes, I'll go along with it.
I, 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 I don't, Pete, you're basically done, right? We need volunteers.
I, I skipped over one slide I just wanted to share.
Okay.
Um, and it's about the, uh, the logo. Sorry.
Okay.
Great logo.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the, the logo, for example, was, can you see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Based on a competition that was with, uh, Commissioner Rocky Smith's graphic designs class at Oregon City High School. So he has two design classes. We got about 50 entries, different logos, and this design was the winner, um, by student from Russia, Rotary Exchange student. And, uh, he won $150 for the design. Um, and that was really fun. We felt it really speaks to what we're trying to get to with this plan and incorporates a lot of the known imagery that we're familiar with, with the city.
Great button design.
That's it. On top of that, we do need to choose, uh, the planning commission with, uh, position for the project advisory team. Uh, one, and it is a, we'll be having about, we'll have probably 10 or so meetings of the project advisory team, uh, throughout the course of this process, including both the visioning and the update process. And it's probably a time commitment of about four hours a month on average, I estimate, although you can devote as much time as you wish.
Okay, so we need a primary and an alternate. Do we have any, starting, anybody wanna volunteer to be the primary?
Well, I'm done here in six months, so I guess it shouldn't be me. After eight years, oh, God.
Anybody, anybody?
Do you want me to go on af- after the planning commission? After my position's over with, do you want me to continue on in that role?
The position is for our planning commissioner. So you can be on it for a temporary amount, and then we can switch you out if that's what the planning commission decides.
Just let somebody else do it then.
You couldn't do it.
I nominate Patty.
I, I think Patty would be great.
Or Dirk, Dirk's got all this time on his-
I, I don't, I don't have the additional time right now. I'm sorry.
How about-
I'm willing to serve as the alternate, but I, I don't think, I, I foresee a different commissioner be the primary.
I would, I would rather go as an alternate with you as the primary.
Yay, Chris, you're nominated by acclamation. Elimination, I should say.
I was actually planning to, um, to do it as a, in a separate capacity, but, yeah.
Was that a yes or no? He said yes.
You can serve in an overlapping capacity as long as you can represent both positions in an objective fashion. But it's a visioning process, you know? This is really about getting to the roots of what Oregon City residents want, so.
Right. Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll volunteer, Pete. I'll do it. I'll be the primary for the planning commission.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. That's great.
And does anybody else wanna be the alternate?
Vern said he wouldn't mind.
Who else wants to?
Vern said he wouldn't mind.
Oh, Vern did say that, yeah, okay.
No, no, I, I would rather support you as the alternate. I would have liked to have been the alternate with you as the primary, but with Chris as the primary, that's fine. You, you can have your fingers in the pie as an alternate.
Who's he talking to?
All right, so everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Um, I wanna say one quick thing before we move on. Commissioner Gao, you brought it up, and I think it was important. Um, and that's concerning how this whole process is gonna be affected by COVID-19. You were absolutely right. And I emailed both Pete and Laura a couple of weeks ago, uh, with a lot of the same concerns that you already spelled out. Um, and after email conversations with them, I'm, I'm convinced that both of them and the consultants are aware of what they're up against and have already thought about alternative ways to, to get to the inclusion that we're looking for. So, uh, I had serious concerns and I, a lot of that has been relieved, because I, I think they're on top of it. They know what they're up against, uh, and, and I'm convinced that they've got ways to get through it.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so at that point, we'll move on to item 4B, request for letter of support TGM grant. Mr. White.
All right, I'd like to introduce Josh Wheeler, Assistant City Engineer, um, to talk about the program.
He waited all this time.
Hello, everyone, make this quick.
Where is he? Where, there is light behind him.
Uh, it's just a picture. Um, Laura, do you have any idea how to share my screen on? Oh, there it is. All right, so you guys should be able to see my, uh, screen now?
Yes, sir.
Everyone see that?
Yes.
Yep.
So, uh, we're going out for a TGM grant, which is for transportation growth management. Uh, we're looking at the urbanization study of the Park Place area. What is TGM? State program administered by ODOT. Uh, it funds things like TSP plans, but also things like corridor plans. Uh, we have a lot of studies we've done, uh, that are similar to this one, such as the TSP, the Lynn Leland Myers Corridor, uh, Holcomb Pedestrian Plan, the Myers Corridor Plan, the concept plans, um, the road access management plan. So all of these done with various funding mechanisms, but these are the style of studies of what this proposed Park Place one is. Uh, how do we use all these studies? Generally, we use them for private development. Um, we reference them during the land use process. Uh, that helps us determine what the build-out should be by private developers on these corridors. Um, it also helps us to apply for grants for capital projects. But what we really don't use it for very often is actually to determine what a capital project should be, because more often than not, these are for private development, not really for, uh, capital projects, because we usually don't have the money for that sort of thing. Where are we talking about? This is a little picture of where we're talking about the Park Place area. We're only looking at the red outlined area, because the rest of the area is taken care of by the Park Place Concept Plan or is part of private development that would never be, be affected by this. It would, it's blank land that's gonna have its own roads based on the TSP. Uh, we would make sure we coordinate with, with the Park Place Concept Plan, the pedestrian plan, and a state precious schools grant that we're currently applying for, for the Holcomb Boulevard to put in rapid flash and beacons, crosswalks, and sidewalk, um, potentially. Um, this urbanization plan would allow, uh, a guideline for how we do build out of roads such li- such as Swan, Hunter, Hiram, Front, Aperson, Harley, and Ames. Um, it could do others too. It all just depends on the amount of money we get and how many roads we can focus on during, uh, the preparation of the plan. Uh, this not only includes how to widen a road, but also which roads should include sidewalks, um, and which ones should include bike lanes, or if they should just be charros. Well, the grant is $100,000. Um, that's what we're seeking. We're gonna use a local match of $50,000. We actually already placed in the budget $100,000, so we're, uh, looking to spend less than we were going to. We were gonna do this on our own until this opportunity came up. Uh, so now we're asking for a little more money, $150 instead of $100, but only 50 of that will be city funds. And we're looking letters of support from the city commission, uh, yourselves, transportation advisory committee, Park Place Neighborhood Association, and Citizen Involvement Committee, all of which I'm meeting with at various times from now through the beginning of July. Uh, you guys got to be first. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm here for that. Otherwise, um, we would ask that you, um, support the chair to sign a letter of support.
Josh, question, Tom Guile. So you're subsidizing private development-
So you're subsidizing private development and park place with these, a grant fund? In other words, you want like me to support something where private development can, can build more roads in our, in our Park Place neighborhood? That's what it sounds like to me.
No, what, um, so for example, um, we have a corridor plan called the Len Leland Myers Corridor and um, that helps us determine how a private developer should build our roads at their cost um, when they develop property along that corridor. Um, we're looking for a similar thing in Park Place that when someone uh, develops along Hunter or along Swan or other roads. All we have right now is the TSP, which is really intended to be used for new roads. The corridor plans help us adapt the TSP to an existing uh, road situation and say what's right for that neighborhood and how would that um, plan out. So in no way would that money go to a private developer. Um, it helps staff use it um, to know what to tell that private developer to do.
And what, how does your um, the advisor committee, how do you come about all these decisions? Are you going to have more meetings like as being planned for the master plan? Because Park Place was already, I sat through it for seventeen years now. Park Places had been through the early parts and all the way to this point. So is it, uh, it sounds more like the side streets because the Park Place Concept Plan, I already said, this is the road, this is what we're going to do.
Well, the Park Place Concept Plan is for the Concept Plan area, which is the undeveloped area that's outside of this boundary that I had placed on the screen.
Well, the red line is the boundary right next to my house, it is in the Concept Plan.
Well, it's, I, I may have the line incorrect, but it's intended to be for the existing road system, not any of the to-be-developed areas.
Okay, thank you, that explains it.
Any other questions from commissioners? Josh, I, I've just got two really quick things and then we'll get a motion. Um, just a couple of suggestions. In the third, at the end of the third paragraph in your letter, uh, the last sentence says to properly address roads going forward. I think it should say your roads and, and I should also mention alternative transportation like bike and pedestrian facilities.
Sure.
Not, not just roads. Then the only other thing, and this is, this is what happens when you uh, uh, are married to an English teacher for forty-five years and have a daughter who's an English teacher. Uh, but in the, in the fourth paragraph, on the fourth line, the word urbanization is missing an I.
Uh, okay, yeah.
The kind of stuff that jumps out. Living with two English teachers.
We can get that updated and I can work with Laura to get that to you, assuming that the commission would, would like to support this tonight.
Okay, so do we have a motion from the commission uh, giving approval for me to sign this revised letter from Josh?
I'll make a motion if we do that.
Second.
Okay, move by Commissioner Stag, second by Commissioner Gage. Color roll, or can we do this by voice?
Yes. Voice works.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Abstain.
Any abstain?
Me.
Pardon?
Tom Guile abstaining, Tom.
Okay, so we have uh, Commissioner Guile abstaining and, and no, no's all the rest, ayes. Um, I just have one more really quick thing. Laura's going to be sending you a letter, um, she sent to me, uh, that was written by her staff and uh, without getting into the details of it, you'll see the letter. But basically it gets around to the point that, to be politically correct, the history of zoning and how it started, it was not necessarily inclusive, we'll, we'll put it that way. Uh, and that their letter very eloquently addresses their concerns and, and how planning needs to be done going forward uh, to be inclusive. Uh, and uh, what I, I've asked Laura to put that on the agenda for two weeks, i- if, two weeks from now. I'd like you to look at it, uh, and I'd like us to talk about whether or not we as a planning commission would write a letter in support of what they've done uh, or whether we would just handle with each of us individually, whoever wanted to. So that's just something, take a look at the letter when Laura sends it to you and that'll be on the agenda in two weeks. That's all I have, Laura, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
All right, so thank you everybody for putting up with this tonight. I know it went a little long, part of that was because of trying to deal with Zoom. I appreciate everybody's cooperation on that and with that, we adjourned.
Nice to see everybody again.